Just for the record, I know they had the placards wrong. I am not Norman Holcomb. Very happy about that. Please, welcome to the November 14th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I understand that there is some problems with the video tonight. The audio will be transmitted live, so if there's people at home that can't get the video, it's not your equipment. It's ours. You can't hear me?
No, speak out loud, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Better.
Better.
Is it on?
It's on, yeah. All right. Can you hear me now? Better? No?
A little better.
It's the equipment, apparently. I'll try to speak as loudly as I can without shouting. I hope those microphones are working. For the benefit of people at home, I was telling them that the video is not operational right now, just the audio, so that if they can't get the pictures, they'll know that it's not their equipment. It's due to the failure of the video equipment here. We hope to have that straightened out soon. We'll start with, now I can hear it myself better. So I'll start with public announcements and comments. Does anybody have any public comments they would like to make? I see a hand. There's a face behind it. It looks like Vita Morris.
Yeah, Vita Morris. Have the minutes of the July 30th executive session been released already?
I don't know the answer to that, but I don't recall having seen them in the packet, so I would surmise they have not been approved yet.
Not today, is that? Do you have any?
Yeah, well, I anticipate reviewing it with town council, and because our end of the lawsuit would be over, that we could release those at a certain time very shortly.
Any, you know, little better idea? A week, two weeks?
I can't give you a date certain, but it is certainly something that we're working to get in front of the board soon, so that they can approve it to be released.
Dan said, for people who didn't hear, that he would be checking with town council on that, and that I would surmise that while there's litigation pending, they probably would not be released until after whatever the litigation has been terminated.
Yeah, the appeal period is still active, so, on the lawsuit.
But beyond that, I can't answer your question. I'm gonna have to defer to town council on that.
I thought the town of Yarmouth was off the hook.
Will there be an appeal, Vita? Do you know?
Sorry?
Are you willing to say whether or not there's gonna be an appeal on that? We could probably tell you faster when.
You think I was born yesterday?
I'm just... You asked me, so we ask you, you know? It all depends on you. That's the answer.
Yes.
My name is Lee Hamilton, and I live in Yarmouth Port. And I understand this evening you can't comment after issues are presented, so my comment is that I would not want to see the Community Preservation Act cut by 50%. And I am fully informed about the need for it to protect our water resources. And I'm a member of the Democratic Town Committee, and we've had two presentations on that issue. So I'm informed about it, and I understand the need for it, but I believe we have to figure out a better method to do as opposed to just cutting the Community Preservation Act by 50%. So that's my comment. I'm also a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, as a disclaimer, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Don Marino, 9 Ellis Circle. I'd also like to speak to the cutting of the CPC. I think it's penny-wise and pound-foolish. CPC is the capital budget for the town. And through that capital budget, you're able to fund projects that gets other funding for the town. So by cutting that back and cutting the number of projects, and there's a whole series of examples I could give, but we don't have the time. If you look at the overall economics of it, it is really money very well-spent that gets other monies, and it really shouldn't be cut. In fact, if anything, we should think about increasing it.
Thank you. It doesn't matter.
I'll go right here. You don't have to go up there. You can use this mic right here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I was quite disappointed. We have a mechanical problem with the PA system, the television, when it came to the town meeting last week. Years ago, the person that was in charge of that always made a proof run before the meeting and got rid of all of the glitches. Because a lot of people shut-ins, they would like very much to know what's going on, and it's to hear the selectmen and other town officials giving a presentation before the microphone in that room doesn't, they don't get the message at home sitting in front of a television. And I appreciate that, and also, the majority of the people that have television that are tuned into Channel 18, they get more snow than they do pictures. So that's another thing. We're trying to improve the town, but we gotta get to the people in order to get our point across. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I agree with you 100%. And Selectmen Forest has been quite vocal about improving communications, and in particular, public service television. So your point's well-taken, and I think everybody agrees with you and wants to see dramatic improvement in this area. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Mary Ann Agresti, 17 Point of Rocks Road. I also act as the chairperson for the Yarmouth Newport Preservation Foundation, which owns and operates the Yarmouth New Church. So I'm here to ask you to please not even a percentage reduce the community preservation tax surcharge. Because of that, we have been able to do several projects over the past years, bringing up our building to code so the public can appreciate it, and so it's safe doing an exterior renovation again, so the rain didn't fall inside and destroy it a second time. And then being able to restore the antique paintings on the ceiling, which are unique to New England. And now we're able to heat and cool the building, allowing it to be an asset and a community cultural center for the north side year-round for our community. We have nearly 3,000 people who have visited in just our short season this year alone, and these people are from all over the country. We use these funds to not only do these projects, but they 100% help us to leverage for additional funding, because we cannot rely on the CPC funds alone. We do a lot of grant applications in addition to that. So our project is simply one of dozens that requires that sort of funding, and we think of the town as a partner, and we would hate to lose that partnership. Thank you.
George O'Leary from 34 Studley Road. Live on Long Pond and got Brian Horsley in from APCC because of the level of algae bloom going on unprecedented on Long Pond this year. In part, it's climate, but clearly, we've got the septic situation, fertilization situation, and storm drain runoff is a disaster. So I'm really sympathetic to this. But on the other hand, I think the CPA funds are not the funds to raid. I mean, they provide at a rate of $2 additional to each dollar that we invest in things like affordable housing and open space, which are proceeding pretty glacially in our town relative to others. It would be really important to maintain that fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Bishop, Yarmouth Port. It was my understanding that the implementation of the short-term rental tax was the mechanism to be used to fund wastewater improvement in our town, and the amount of funding from that was going to be a game-changer. I urge the Selectmen not to pillage the CPC funds. It's too important to this town on many, many levels. Thank you.
Just a quick response to that. There has been no definitive plan yet as to how to fund wastewater project. One of the considerations was using that short-term rental money for dedicating that to wastewater, but that in itself will not be sufficient. It doesn't mean I'm telling you that therefore the money will come from CPC. We're gonna have a presentation on that tonight. But if that short-term rental money is dedicated to wastewater, there's still additional monies that have to be raised beyond that. Anyone else? Town council discussion, Ocean Club license is the first matter. Vote is for 615.
There has been a couple of edits last minute that you don't have in your package. I have the red-line version of the document here for your review as council walks you Jay will highlight the edits on that that were requested by council for the Ocean Club.
So this is a license and not an easement for, to allow certain infrastructure to reside on the town's property. It's essentially to allow the construction of a bulkhead along a strip of the property. There's currently a somewhat deteriorating wall there. It's a small piece. The changes to the agreement offered by the Property Owners Council are twofold. One, to give the correct identifiers to the property owner, and the second, to allow or to clarify that the license will allow them for entry, to allow the construction and maintenance of the bulkhead that they're going to be doing on that property. Otherwise, this is not unlike other licenses that we've worked on. They're not easements. They are terminable licenses that the Selectmen typically give where there's minor encroachments of property or there's other use of municipal property that is easily controlled by an agreement versus the giving of a real property interest which would otherwise require town meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Go ahead.
Are we going to have a display of the property in question on the screen so that all the people that are here and those that will be watching on videotape later can have an idea as to what exactly we're talking about? Is that in the?
It's in the packet. We did not have it for the screen at the time. It was in advance notice on the packet. So there's a map inside your.
Okay. I think it might be helpful for the people that are following along, at least someone describe. If there isn't something that we can show people what we're talking about, it might be helpful to at least describe the area in question that will be the subject of a fair amount of discussion tonight.
Sure. So the area in question is the Ocean Club motel property on South Shore Drive, and it's where the property abuts with the Smugglers Beach property. So it's, there's an existing bulkhead that contains the patio and pool area for the motel, and then directly adjacent to that is the town beach, basically, and the sand and the dune that leads right out to South Shore Drive. So there's an existing bulkhead there that does have a slight encroachment on the town property, and they're looking, because that bulkhead is deteriorating, to actually add a new bulkhead around to encapsulate that. So it'll just increase that encroachment into the beach area by, I think it was, a total of 361 square feet for the entire length of 86 feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would've been helpful if I would assume, when I saw these diagrams, that these photos, that they would be put up, as Mark did, so people could understand that, what the nature and extent of the encroachment is. So it looks like where the stakes are, there's gonna be an increase beyond the current encroachment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you, for the people here, talk about that, what the extent that encroachment is now and what it's gonna be expanded to?
So the extent of the encroachment now is about three feet at its narrowest point, and that is at the seaward face of the bulkhead, and then that's gonna be extended minimally at the beach end of the property, and out to a maximum of five feet off the property line at the road end of the property. So it tapers out from the narrowest point at the waterside out to a maximum of five feet at the South Shore Road end of the bulkhead.
Now we're proposed.
And there is, currently is the approximately, I think it's three feet.
So we're going from.
Encroaching. So it'll be just over three at the narrowest point, so it's a very minimal increase from what it is now at the seaward side. And at the maximum extent at the roadside, it's five feet. So it's going from zero to five feet in that area.
It's not a straight line the whole way, the encroachment now. It only goes about three-quarters of the way, maybe a little longer, up that property line. It's extending a little further towards the road and gets a little wider at that point.
Can someone explain the need for the further encroachment?
So it was deemed by the property owner that it would be much more impactful to try and demolish the existing structure, because they'd have to take out the patio area and the pool area to be able to rebuild the bulkhead and its existing footprint. So they thought it would be much less impactful to the property to be able to just install additional bulkhead on the outside of the existing.
Kelly, just, can you, this all began, it came to our attention from an application to the cons comm for this work?
That's right. Yeah, it came through the Conservation Commission for.
So we were not aware of this encroachment up until real recently?
And then, yeah, when it went through the permitting process, that's when we discovered there was an existing encroachment, and then the proposed work.
Do we know how, when they built it originally, they accessed that? And what does that mean in terms of potential environment, environmental impact on the beach?
People talking to the mics, please.
Louder.
So the original construction was in the late 50s to the early 60s, predated the Well and Protection Regulations, so we don't have any documentation on how that was constructed. The proposed access to do the work is down that property line, where there is an access from the road down to there, and the Commission on Reviewing the Project deemed that that was suitable access under controlled conditions, that it wouldn't cause any significant impacts in terms of well and resource areas.
So in terms of construction of a new bulkhead being on, the equipment and machinery will be on the beach?
It will be in the beach area, yeah, temporarily. Yeah, but contained within a limited work area.
Okay, and the cons comm's okay with that?
Yeah, there's definitely conditions that are associated with that in terms of the use of heavy equipment on a beach, refueling and those kind of things.
And in terms of a license, I'm sorry, is it okay if I keep asking questions?
Oh, go ahead.
In terms of a license, this basically, we're not, the town is not getting any benefit from it in terms of financially, but we are environmentally, is that what you're, what's the purpose of supporting this license, other than just allowing it for legal purposes? I mean, I guess for me, I'm concerned about setting a precedent.
So.
What's the benefit to us?
So the benefit is more of a policy consideration for the board as to whether or not you want to support this. I would say there's no precedent-setting value in the granting of a license. It might be that someone may come to you and ask for a license that they may think is similar, that you may think is dissimilar. You are never bound to do the same thing twice. Every set of facts is entirely different. This is entirely your decision as to a policy question with respect to this property, and you need not be concerned from a legal perspective of a binding precedent-setting event here. So it's entirely up to you.
Go ahead.
I just have one other question.
No, go ahead.
Dan, is this business in good standing with the town?
It's.
I know a time back where there was an issue with that.
In order to do work, you have to, with the town, pull a permit, you have to be up with good standing with the town and pay your tax or obligations. I'm not aware of any outstanding obligation of the town.
I guess I still haven't heard why it's important for the town to allow further encroachment as opposed to allowing them to rebuild what they have now. I am concerned about whether it's by license agreement or otherwise, having people building on town property at no benefit to the town.
Well, I think the way we saw it, if I may, is it had already been constructed many, many years ago, so there had been an encroachment for a very long time. The work that they were looking to do is needed because the bulkhead is deteriorating, and that's what brought them forward. And I don't even think to the owners here presently that they were aware of the encroachment until it went through the application process. Once that happened, it was brought to our attention with the idea, well, apparently this was built some years ago on town property, we need to go forward to make these repairs. How do we go forward? And the two options that were discussed was, one would be an easement. If we were to allow for an easement, it would have to go two-thirds voted town meeting, or, as town council has offered here tonight, the potential for a non-precedent-setting license to use the property. In exchange for that, their work gets to be done, makes the corrective action for their property investment, and it allows it to exist today and be corrected in a legal fashion recognized today with the license.
Well, I certainly believe that, you know, they've utilized this property for a period of time, that I don't want to take that away from them. I'm not saying that, I think if we need to do a license for the encroachment to make what they have there now legal, I just don't understand why we need to allow further encroachment to make this happen. I mean, can they not do it within?
I let the engineer representing the owners here tonight, there may be some issue that he'd like to bring to your attention as to why they had asked for this additional encroachment.
If you're not familiar with bulkhead installation.
Excuse me, you want to identify yourself?
Yes, Don Monroe from Coastal Engineering.
Thank you.
If you're not familiar with bulkhead installation, for us to replace the bulkhead in its existing location, it would be a huge detriment to the environmental issues that could be raised in terms of the excavation and in terms of the potential failure during that excavation of the materials that are behind the existing bulkhead. So typically, we install new bulkheads where they're on the shoreline in order to encroachment in front of the existing because of the amount of environmental impact that can happen in an installation when you try to remove an existing bulkhead. So when we went in front of the Conservation Commission unbeknownst to us that we were encroaching on the town property, we kept that in mind. It was more important to address the environmental issues than anything else. So if we have to go back as a result of not being able to get the particular license, then the installation is gonna have to go back through conservation, and we'll try to justify or somehow come up with a method that minimizes the impact, but I know what the impact will be. The impact will be much greater than just installing another bulkhead in front of the existing one because of our previous experience with other bulkheads.
What environmental possibilities would be within the existing bulkhead?
So the installation of a bulkhead is relatively easy. You use a vibrating hammer, and then you just walk along. But the installation of a bulkhead, when you have to remove the existing, you have to excavate first. So we'd be excavating Coastal Beach, Coastal Dune, and probably affecting land under ocean because we'd be within, so we'd have to have siltation barriers up and stuff like that. So that's just more impactful to the resource area than only driving the sheets. So we're trying to minimize the effect to the resource areas with respect to 310 CMR, the Well and Protection Act. So that was the reason for the approach. So that would be the approach on any bulkhead we ever do. This is a unique situation because the existing bulkhead happens to be on town property. It's been there for over 30 years, according to the owner. And so rather than try to excavate out, now that we have a 310 CMR, we have to try to address that as well as try to address the encroachment. So we were hoping that the Selectmen would see that it would be a benefit to the town in terms of saving the resource areas from unnecessary activity. in terms of saving the resource areas from unnecessary activity in lieu of a license.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, did the Commission actually make an assessment, Kelly, that this work is to be permitted or should be approved pending a resolution of this? How did, where is the Conservation Commission at with respect to its?
Yeah, they did vote to approve the project as it is on the basis that it would be less impactful to the resource areas to take this approach.
The other question I have, and I see Karen Green here, and I don't mean to put department heads on the spot, but I'm just curious how this recommendation fits with, I mean, because we are to some degree disposing of land of the town. Does this fit in with our land policy at all?
I don't think we do have a, we're not disposing of anything, really. We're just allowing them to do this work on property. And this license is merely giving them permission. They're not getting any interest, legal interest in that land. And it can be revoked at the will of the town. And in a way, I'm surprised they don't want more than a license because, I mean, the town could come along at any point and say, you can't use it anymore. Right?
That's right. I mean, I spoke with their council and she did inquire as to why we couldn't do an easement. And I suggested, well, that's a bigger ask because you're giving away town property and you'd have to go before town meeting, which I'm not sure she was aware of. And so, a license is a little bit easier and it keeps us in control of the property. And granting of licenses, even though I've only been with the town for a few years, we've done a few licenses for small temporary uses and for other uses of town property. So, it's not uncommon, this type of exact license, we haven't done, but we've discussed licenses in a number of different situations in the town in the past.
I did notice there is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I want to follow on to your point because I think I'm, I share some of the similar commentary. I'm used to working in the federal government with federal land acquisition. And oftentimes, communities, particularly here on the Cape, would have an interest in, even parcels as small as this, find a way to correct a problem. But oftentimes, it was through the method of exchange. So, the private property owner, this is what I'm used to, the private property owner, if there was an inadvertent or mistaken encroachment, at the federal level, the way to resolve that would be an exchange of something of similar value. So, what they would do is either make a monetary payment or execute an easement, but there'd be some way to sort of, for the municipality or the other party not to be giving away public land or allowing someone to use public land to the extent. And often, it would be either through an easement or even a real estate exchange, even if it involves 300 square feet. I know it sounds like a lot of work to do for something simple, but it wouldn't surprise me if there are other encroachments of similar nature on municipal property.
I'm sure there are many other encroachments. I'll also add, without advocating one way or the other, because this is entirely a selectman's decision, that the state and the federal government obviously can grant property rights without the necessity of a town meeting. They have other legislative functions that they can move a little more quickly. But it's also not uncommon for the federal government, including on the Cape, to enter into use agreements with municipalities that are short of an easement but are essentially revocable or terminable allowances for use of land, especially offshore land where there's management, local municipal management of property and waters that are otherwise the property of the federal government, where they would rather have local, we're getting off topic, of course, I'm just saying, that use agreements, land agreements, easements take all shapes and sizes. So.
If I may, though, because this is a pretty good opportunity to discuss that, with the disposition policy that we do have now, as a, for instance, this is a good short-term remedy to address a situation where they'd like to get these repairs done to the bulkhead. But with the disposition policy that we have today, we could use, go through that process, value, we'd have to do a valuation of the property, get an appraisal on it and go through, I think ultimately because the encroachment's been around so long and because it does, the bulkhead is a vital function of the support for this structure, it probably makes more sense not even to give them an easement, but just to sell the property outright. We have a mechanism now to have a go-through review and internal committee, the open, the land disposition committee to present the recommendation. But that takes a fair amount of time.
Right.
To get through that process. And I know they had a certain timetable to do this repair work, but certainly if we were given the direction by the board to begin that process, you know, you're only talking about roughly under 400 square feet of property.
Right.
So, the actual value to any other party but the Ocean Club is very minimal because the next-door neighbor is the town with the beach.
Right.
So, it's certainly something we could put through as a, as a process to go through, but it would take a while and it wouldn't satisfy the requirement to fix this problem that we have right now for them.
When was, did they want to do the work? What was their timeline on that?
This fall.
This fall?
I mean, if I can just say for the record, I'm very sympathetic and very supportive. I think there is the precedent issue and the public interest issue that Tracy raises that I think is a very valid one. And from my own experience in dealing with federal land issues, usually what's done is, if the public is going to cede use of that land, there's usually something provided in exchange, whether it's, and it's either monetary or some other public benefit.
Yeah, the State Procurement 30B law outlines the process of disposing of this property. That's correct.
Right. It could conceivably be public access or another public benefit. So, the public, meaning the town of Yarmouth, the people of Yarmouth, would be giving up the use of this property, not that it's in high demand at the moment. But it does set a policy, so if in the event, or when in the event this does come up again, I think it would provide a proper balancing of public and private interest. And getting to Tracy's point, I think the precedent of this, I think we need to be mindful of that going forward. Because I suspect this is not going to be the first time this pops up again. And I would be more comfortable with an even exchange, something of value brought back.
Might I suggest some kind of hybrid, too? We could always add terms to this license that contemplated future discussions along the lines of a more permanent solution where there would be some type of exchange of value, whether it's monetary or access or other environmental benefit that the town may enjoy for the purposes of beach nourishment, management, or whatever. And that could be part of the discussion. And in the meantime, they would have the right to perhaps commence construction. I'm just thinking out loud a little bit on.
I'd support that. I'd be more comfortable with that. I think, I think a license is, I mean, I was going to ask you about law. I know contracts typically have a lawful end, that you can only put them in, they're only good for 25 years or whatever. What is the termination of a license agreement?
At will by the selectmen.
Okay. So, I mean, I think, I think to the owner's point, if I were the owner, I'd be more, I don't think we're talking a lot of money here for the amount of space, but I do think that a more permanent solution would be something that I think would be beneficial for both the owner and for the town. So, I don't know how you can construct something like that, perhaps a short-term license with, while they're able to work towards a permanent solution.
Happy to work with you and, you know, try my hand at something. I'll have to leave in some blanks, obviously, on the terms, but I could work with Dan and the owners on moving forward. At least, the license would have a process by which we would be discussing that. And because of the freedoms enjoyed by the selectmen under a license, obviously, there's some pressure on the owner to work with us. Obviously, they've worked with us in good faith so far, so I imagine they would continue to do that, especially if there was a permanent solution as their attorney was seeking from us at the end of the rainbow.
So, the first chance we'd have to be able to go down that road would be town meeting in the spring with the idea that if everything went right and we had all the process in order and we're able to meet all the timelines, we need to do that. But secondly to that, if we weren't able to meet it in the spring with the fall town meeting now scheduled, I would ask for up to a year's time on the license to give us enough time to work through it.
So, you can't, you could put a prospective term, but terms really aren't recognized. If there's the selectman's understanding that that's the kind of leeway you're giving, that's fine. You could have an intention, but obviously, licenses are terminable. So, at will, so a term would be a matter of convenience and notice for the parties, but it's not strictly enforceable by anyone.
So, but we would make that commitment to go down that road?
I don't see the town's got any real downside here. It would be nice, as Mark suggested, if there could be some kind of permanent resolution to this. But I think that really is something that the owners should be pushing for more than the town, because the town at any time can, a license by definition is terminable at the will of the licensor. So, the town could say a year from now, six months from now, or whatever, that's it. It's over. And get your, you know, get your encroachment off of the town property. So, you know, the timeframe is by definition the timeframe that the town decides. The other side has no input on that. It's a unilateral right that the town has to say how long the license endures or how long it doesn't, it does not endure or when it's terminable. So, the other thing is, you know, we're not talking a great deal of property here. We're not talking about any, I don't think usable space. I can't see that this can have any negative impact on the town's use of its beach. But I have a question for you, Kelly. Are you satisfied, you heard their engineer testify, are you satisfied that by granting this license, there'd be less environmental impact than if they had to build this within the footprint?
Yeah, that was the basis for the Commission's approval of the project, though I would just suggest, from looking at the plan, I just had a quick word with the engineer, that there might be an opportunity to actually reduce that additional encroachment by jogging in the bulkhead wall in the northern section, because it kind of fans straight out and creates a wider section of encroachment at the northern end. They could actually jog that in so it aligns closer with the existing concrete wall. And that could significantly reduce the new encroachment in that area. So, there is a way of perhaps minimizing the encroachment by changing the design a little. But, yeah, the basis for the approval by Concom was that this was a much less impactful solution than demolition and rebuild within the existing footprint.
I will say that we received an email from Selectman Holcomb, who's in transit, who may or may not arrive here tonight at some point, and that he wanted it known that he's vehemently opposed to this. He doesn't think this is a good precedent of giving up town land. But again, I don't think the town, now we're switching to me as opposed to Mr. Holcomb, I don't think the town is giving up anything. It's simply they're allowing use for as long as the town determines it and no longer. So, I don't think it's a big deal myself.
So, I guess with that, I think there's some good ideas to move forward. I think if you just task myself, Dan, Kelly with some ideas moving forward, depending on where you want to go, and take it up at the next selectman's meeting, if in fact you want us to kind of build up a future-looking part of this license so that it will take on the form of an exchange, where I think we could work on that.
The next meeting is Tuesday, so, because this meeting, so I don't think you're talking about the next meeting.
Well, I mean, I, the drafting of something along what Ms. Post suggested is not hard for me to add.
I would like to come up with a permanent solution.
If you think you can.
Without impacting their project. I would love to see the project go forward, but I do think that.
At the very least, then maybe we would add something aspirational under the license, which is, again, as Mike, as you've said, is terminable, that there would be a process with the aspiration that by town meeting, we would have something together for a more permanent solution. Obviously, they want a permanent solution, too. And if we were sponsoring an easement article that where there was some kind of exchange, tangible or otherwise, that provided some kind of benefit or environmental assurance or something like that to the town, then we could, we could work on that.
Another thing I think people should keep in mind is, you know, in terms of a permanent solution, what's the value of 300 square feet of unbuildable land that's only a benefit to the butter who has the problem?
Well, I would argue it's, it's still town land. It's still owned by the people of Yarmouth.
And if you give them a license, it's still going to be town land.
I understand that, but I think we're going to deal with this situation in the future, and I think it would be helpful. Again, I've dealt with federal lands officials for years, and there's a consistent policy that protects public interest and provides a remedy for the private homeowner or municipality or other entity. It's known upfront, it's known in advance. I think there's a value in trying to accomplish something like that here while allowing, I don't have a problem with the project going forward, long as the parties are working in good faith.
Right.
To try to come up with something that would also be consistent with our philosophy in terms of land disposition.
Right. And as you said, it may not necessarily be monetary in nature. There could be some kind of other benefit, including benefits to that area of beach.
Right. But there's a loss of a resource. It may be minimal. And I understand the concerns of the Conservation Commission in terms of not wanting to have to do something more destructive. But again, no matter how large or small, it's a public resource, and I think we owe it to the people of Yarmouth to at least make sure that any time there's a decision to dispose of land, that the town's interests are fully respected.
Again, I have to remind you that we're not talking about disposing of any of the town land here.
Well, I, yeah, I guess I don't see this land being used by the town of Yarmouth at any point in the future, so.
I agree. So, you need not take.
Council's looking for a direction.
No, well, you need not, I mean, I think I sense where some of the direction is going with respect to, at the very least, as Ms. Post and I just discussed, and I discussed with Selectman Forrest as well, that maybe we work on an additional paragraph to this license that looks towards a process whereby, where, could make it permanent upon a negotiated exchange of some value, tangible or otherwise.
Okay.
And I'll work on something as, if I have something ready, we'll put it on your, if Mr. Knappich says so.
Yeah, if you can get it ready for the next meeting, fine. If it's a meeting after that, that's fine, too.
Okay.
More than likely, because take the packet set for tomorrow work. Unless you want to work tonight on it.
No. I want to take some cold medicine and go to bed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 645, SEVAC, round four, agreement and adder.
So, this is another SEVAC solar opportunity. You've seen this before. And also, the adder financial vehicle that's been in front of us before. So, Liz Argo's here to update you on what the latest plan is. Thank you, Liz.
Hi. I also should be going home with the cold medicine, but anyway. So, you had a letter that explains the project that was circulated. This is, you have projects that are in, under completion on your two fire stations, but this is an additional project that is to be installed over on Workshop Road, which is where your septic plant is located. It's a, it's, we call it parcel E. Working with Rich Bienvenu, who's been absolutely fantastic, and the Yarmouth Energy Committee, whom you should be very proud, and also Ed Decencio, we have earmarked the parcel as a development site for solar. It went out with the, what we call our round four request for proposals. We got 19 vendors to respond. We spent months choosing and then more months negotiating, and negotiations are complete now. And it's a good price, it's a good size, it's on the land that is, borders the septic treatment headquarters plant. And so, we're at the end of the negotiations. We're here tonight to ask for the execution of the contracts. We want to keep these projects moving as rapidly as possible because the, what is the new state incentive program, which is called SMART, is somewhat competitive in that it's first come, first served. There's a lot involved in getting the projects into that queue for SMART qualification. And as I say, first come, first served. So, Rich has worked with us on the contract details. We're satisfied. We, SEVAC's spent five months negotiating with the vendors, and we're very pleased to be able to do that. that we, in the end, held the line. So, with that, I think, Rich, did you want to add anything? I mean, ultimately?
I'll just add, and it's in the, right up here, just so you know the scope of the project. It's 987 kilowatts.
I can give them the details. It's 987 kilowatts, which is just under a megawatt, so it's a large installation. The way this will work is it will have a battery for storage. It will be behind the meter of the storage plant, so it will offset electric needs, and thereby provide substantial savings. That's the best kind of installation you can get, when you have behind the meter, because the cost of electricity is high, and if you can avoid having to pay it, that's your best benefit from solar. Having storage will also help us not only provide resilience, but also offset the plant's demand charge. That plant has heavy equipment, and when the heavy equipment starts up, it imposes demand charges, and if we have a battery that is able to respond on the, and provide the power that normally the grid would have to provide, then those demand charges will be avoided. So, the savings, we cannot pinpoint the exact savings, because the, until we know which block of the SMART program we're going to end up in, we don't know the final details of the agreement. Every time we move down in a block, the deal loses a little bit of value. That's why we're trying to make it go faster. We also have to determine if there are going to be any Eversource interconnection upgrades. So, the, once we get the contract signed, the project designs, which are completed, go to Eversource, and ask, they ask for an interconnection application. They, if they need an impact study, then the vendor has to pay for an impact study to determine exactly what upgrade costs might be involved. We don't know if there will be any upgrade costs. If there are, and if we end up in a SMART block, that suddenly the, the opportunity is not looking financially viable anymore, then the contracts allow for termination. We don't think that's going to happen, but that's, those are the unknowns. We can't give you a savings number at this point, that is, that you can take to the bank.
We do have estimates.
We have estimates, but I caution to steer away from them. We bid the projects in block, for block two, we're now in block four. If we can get the projects out the door and into the queue, maybe we'll be lucky and get them into block five. The PPA price, if anybody's familiar with PPA prices, is .039. We haven't seen PPA prices like that since 2014, but again, we're already, that was block two, we're in block four, and it's about a penny added to that PPA price each time you drop into another block. So, we're more like, that was four cents, but we're more like six cents now.
Yeah, the blocks are statewide competitive. There's only so many megawatts allocated in a block, so as, as the time ticks, other projects get in the queue, and you get, you get moved down the block list, and that's just the way the new system works.
Are we going to get quizzed on this? I think...
I don't know. We don't have time for quizzes.
34 pages, I hope you read it all.
No quizzes, just sign the contracts, let's get these projects going, so we even know.
Yeah, but for the benefit of the public, I, I mean, we have a memo in front of us that suggests there could be savings to the town of Yarmouth of roughly $214,000. Is that my reading?
That's fair. That's fair to put that out there, knowing that...
And that's kind of what we're hoping for and looking for, but...
Yes, I mean, that was based on block two. We're now in block four, so I, we would have to depreciate that $214,000.
So, we're not going to go into this with any plans to lose money we're going in?
Oh, you, no, if you, and that's what I'm trying to make the point, is if you find out, for instance, that Eversource comes back and says you need to get, to write up a million dollars, to cough up a million dollars in order for us to interconnect this project, we do have a mechanism in the contracts that will allow for a, a certain amount of interconnection upgrade costs that will change the PPA price, as same way the block, where the block ends up. But we will look at that and we'll say, oh, now it's, it's 17 cents. Well, guess what? We're only sa, we're saving, the cost of electricity is 20 cents. That means we're now saving 3 cents per kilowatt hour? Maybe we all want to do this now. So, that's part of the review.
What has Eversource been with their interconnection?
We've seen costs from a million dollars, $200,000, $10,000.
In terms of their speed and pace, I mean, some of the projects that we've had in the past, getting our projections to actually come to fruition is, is difficult.
Can we use the word snail?
Yeah.
You mean snail's pace?
That's nice. Snail's a nice pace.
And that's one reason we're frustrated, because we know we're going to be held up by Eversource, and we want Evers, we want to get these projects in front of Eversource as soon as possible.
There's a frame of reference I just mentioned, very conservative on the savings, but you might recall, this was a component of funding our wastewater debt service plan, which we've booked in, hopefully relying on $125,000, not the $214,000. If we were to realize more than that, obviously, we would then, in the future year budget, try to capture that savings to dedicate towards the debt service of wastewater.
I hope your projections are right, then. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is Workshop Road Solar Project LLC?
So, the developer, which is, it was GE Solar, division of GE, they are now called Distributed Solar Development. They're still associated with GE, but they have Blackrock as now their financial partner. They create limited liability corporations. Indeed. This is totally standard practice.
So, they create an LLC just for a particular project? How does that withstand?
Special project.
You know, the financial issues that these, these solar companies have had in the past?
It's, it's just standard practice. There's no way around it. All of our projects are owned by LLCs.
Okay.
All of your projects, I should say, because you're the, actually, your, your fire stations are, were built by Alliance Clean Energy, and Sun Wealth is now the financial partner who came in and basically bought them at their, this, towards the completion of their installation. That's the way the, the industry works.
But they buy them at the same rate we have contracted with them.
Yes. No, it doesn't affect your contracts.
Behind the scenes, the ownership is...
Right, and, and one reason CEVAC likes to stay involved, and it's good for you to, for us to, because we know the financial wherewithal of these financiers who are stepping in, and we have rights within the contract to deny the assignment if we find that they have not got the kind of muscle that, that we approved at the time of contracting, and we could say no.
We appreciate you being there to do that for us, because we've seen some savings in the past from your hard work. But that brings me to my next question. The operational adder on this contract is .0354.
Um, no. Where are you looking?
I'm looking at the note that...
It's not, the, the operational adder, the CEVAC compensation is .005, so it's a half a penny.
.005, and how is that inconsistent with the other ones that we have?
It's less.
It is. So, CEVAC's in a much better financial...
We're doing better. However, I will be returning to a request for an extension of the round one adder, so...
Okay.
Yes and no.
All right, so how, where are we at with the lawsuit that, that you potentially was, were looking at with the state? Not lawsuit, but keeping our legal footing in terms of the market?
Is that the rate case?
The rate case, yeah.
The fact that, at one point, the Eversource wanted to move, change the rates so that net metering credits would be devalued?
You did to...
We haven't heard any return to that. I think we put a really good finish to that.
All right, so, in a financial, your footing, you guys are in good...
Yes, CEVAC's in, in good standing. Eversource has understood that if they try to devalue the net metering credit, they're going to bankrupt, how many towns, Dan?
I did try to read 134 pages as, but one thing that I think that needs to, we don't have the actual contract in front of us, but I have it via email, and the table of contents need to be corrected?
I'm not sure which version you have. We've, we've done an awful lot of work on these, so...
I don't know if this is the document we're approving, the one that got sent to us. Well, I'd like to see what we're going to approve, then.
The only thing that was, actually, there are a few changes, so I'm not sure which version you have. Here's what we would intend to do. What we've done in the past with the other towns to make it easier for everybody, the heavy lifting, because the documents are huge, as you noted, is get the execution pages, assemble the documents, and bring them back. If that's something that you're uncomfortable with, we can bring the completed documents here, get the signature, theoretically be authorizing the town administrator. If not, if all the board needs to, to sign them, then we can go that route, too. But it's easier to assemble them, frankly, in our office, because we have all the original documents ready to go.
That's fine, I would just like to make sure that the table of contents, where all the errors are listed on...
Yeah, no, that's, that's history, that we haven't seen it in with that.
Is that just to track changes on that document, perhaps?
Has Town Council reviewed this?
Yes.
Working with council, actually, I think you use Tallerman and Mead for council anyways, CEVAC does.
Who's that?
Tallerman and Mead.
No, we use Anderson Krieger.
So, CEVAC's council reviewed, and I forwarded it to Lisa Mead, I've worked with her.
Oh, Mead, oh, yeah, Lisa's reviewed them.
Got her comments and relayed them.
Multiple times.
They adopted our changes and kind of held the line on a handful of items, uh, meeting.
Are those changes in the document that we received, or what, what have subs...
I'm, I'm not clear on what you have, because I didn't send it to you, so Rich, but I know Rich has the finals, and that's why I think there are no red lines, for instance, or errors in the documents that we're now handling, so I think you have an older version.
I forwarded what, is it Tatiana?
Tatiana, yeah.
Forwarded electronically.
And that was while I was away in, in Europe? I'm not sure. It may, I think you have the, the final version. When I left for Europe, which was October 10th, she was instructed to send out the final version, and there was that table of contents anomaly in it, and we just didn't have time to turn that around. I couldn't fix it in my office, and the lawyers did not respond in time. So, that was the leftover issue, so that reminds me that you do have the latest version, because that was an outstanding fix that I asked the lawyers to do while I was gone, and they didn't do it.
And that's just a table of contents?
Yeah, so CEVAC has to come back and fix everything.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any other.
So, are we looking for a motion to authorize the town administrator to...
Execute all of the documents pertinent to...
Approve and execute, finalize the documents, and the notice to proceed to the developer?
Yeah.
That's what you're looking for.
In the final document?
There are two sets.
Do we get them, are these, are these projects bonded at all?
Oh, yes.
And they're insured, and you collect that information from them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have decommissioning funds, and it's a lot of, yeah, insurances, totally reviewed.
No doubt.
So, there are two, there are two documents, basically, that need to be executed. One is the lease between the town and the developer, and the other is the intergovernmental agreement between CEVAC and the town. So, those are the two documents you have.
So moved. Give it a second.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So, that passes by a vote of three to zero.
And I don't want to take up too much more time. We're also here on the second item, which is the extension, well, first of all, to let you know how things went in FY19, and then we'll ask for the extension of the round one adder. So, first, the good news, FY19 was a great year. You have a handout, and I know that the people at home don't, but, so I'll give you a quick rundown. CEVAC has been around now, and we are associated with the Cape Light Compact. We've been around since 2007. We now have rounds, what we call the initial round, which was on the rooftops. We have round one, which you'll see on landfills everywhere. Round two, which was a lot of projects at DY Regional School District, and other rooftops. Round three is the seven roofs, which include the two fire stations in Yarmouth that are now running. So, that's excellent news, and I think that is new news to everybody here. And then round four, you just voted to authorize the signature. In addition, we've bought other projects that are operational off Cape. We ultimately have saved the towns and participants over $13 million since 2014. And that's a wonderful way of talking about green, but let's talk about the other green. There's a commensurate amount of greenhouse gas that we're reducing, that's definitely making eyebrows go up in Boston. We're leading the charge here on Cape Cod. CEVAC, Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative, is also doing electric vehicles and charging station initiative. Yarmouth has met with Eversource through CEVAC for four charging stations, and we're looking at two cars. Rich Benvenu has been terrific on coordinating with us on that. In addition, CEVAC...
So that I understand that, you're saying we're getting two electric cars?
You are. And I think it's, at this point, it's a, these are, these are awards from the state through EVIP program, so it's contingent on the awards.
Got it.
And we don't have the news on that yet.
The construction, Eversource showed up, working faster than a snail's pace, and the...
Yeah, because they make electricity off the charging stations.
The west side of the building, on the far parking spots, is the construction of the pads, and we have to do the marking of the spaces, and we're getting that for free through Eversource make-ready program. And the charging stations, hopefully, will be installed very soon. And then, once those are installed, we'll finalize the lease, lease of the vehicles, so hopefully, don't hold me to it, but 30 days or less, I mean, Mike does.
That's great.
And then we have already plans in the works for additional. So, the first step's the longest. Hopefully, it gets quicker from here.
Rich, if you might, just, the electric vehicle, or zero emission vehicle, is a critical component of our energy reduction strategy, so we're a little bit overdue on getting this done, but I forget what total percentage of the 20% energy production, was it, was it over 8% for cars?
I think it was about 8%, and, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, it depends how you look at it, I guess. We submitted our application on that basis, indicating that we want to implement 35, not necessarily electric vehicles, but let's call them electric vehicles, over the next several years, across our fleet. Our application was approved on that basis, but then they also have a regulation that says we won't allow you to do more than two per year. So, how would you possibly get, so I've got to then petition the Commonwealth as to how can we execute our plan on that basis, and see if we can get some relief on that. But I want to get the first step done first.
Got it, thank you.
So, back to where we're at and what we're accomplishing, we, we have a battery project that will be going in at DY High School. Those contracts have been, are in the process of being negotiated. The, the winning vendor for that is Amoresco. We are now reviewing our request for proposals for round five, which is another 25 projects, and Yarmouth has another project in that lineup as well, the Yarmouth Senior Center. We're looking at getting photovoltaics over there.
Ground mounted or roof mounted?
Roof mounted. It's not big, but it's a start. And then last, we are looking at community solar. I handed out to all of you a flyer that presents an opportunity that we are going to partner with Harwich on. We are putting in an installation in Harwich on their As of Right for Green Communities. They were, they, they chose to develop a site for renewables, and that site will be, and have a community solar offering through the town of Harwich. So, we want to do more of that. CEVAC wants to do more of that, too. So, I wanted to quickly go to what has Yarmouth earned this year through all of this? Mind you, you don't have your three, your two fire stations up yet, or the parcel E yet, or Yarmouth Senior Center, but just by having your off-taker participation with CEVAC, your net benefit in FY19 was $163,782.
That's great.
So, and it's always important to remember that this didn't cost you anything. This is just CEVAC at work for you. There's a quick couple of lines from a blog post that's going live, that features your fire chief, and I want to read it real quick. It's titled, "The Front Line of the Clean Energy Transition." "When a tornado touched down in South Yarmouth, Massachusetts this past summer, residents and visitors alike were stunned by what they saw. The tornadoes ripped out, ripped trees out of the ground, pried the roof off of a hotel and left thousands without power during the peak tourist season. For Chief Simonian, the tornado brought a new sense of urgency to an initiative that was already underway, installing solar panels on the rooftops of two Yarmouth fire stations, two installations were made possible by the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative's efforts. Joyce Flynn, Chair of the Yarmouth Energy Committee, sees the projects as long overdue, not just for Yarmouth, but for the human species. Helping preserve the planet isn't the only benefit of solar at the fire station. The solar panels also deliver energy savings that are especially valuable for a building that must be powered around the clock to protect the..." that must be powered around the clock to protect the community. As Phil Simoni says, "Our buildings are running 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 165 days a week. Solar saves the town money and keeps the lights on. Keeping the lights on and the phones ringing is critical because one of the fire stations also houses the town's 911 dispatch center, a key resource during emergencies." So, I just wanted you to know that that's the kind of PR you're getting. So, last but not least, the round one adder. You have your, the CIVAC budget as part of your package. We have to come back again to ask for the round one adder to be extended. It is currently at a quarter of a penny and it will, it will dent the town of Yarmouth, which you still, last year's savings were with the adder in place. So, it does reduce your savings by about $1,000. But that's the kind of, for CIVAC, it's the difference between $40,000 to our budget and it's, it's pretty desperately needed. We are growing and we need to be able to keep growing. So, I'm looking for a motion on that, too. That would be a motion to approve the extension of the round one adder into FY22. That's the year we're here to ask for it.
Can I just ask a question on that, though?
Yeah, please.
I'm looking at your, the finances that you projected and your net income for FY22 is a negative $9,000.
Excuse me? Yes, and that's why we are looking to.
So, this is a projection without the adder?
No, this is with the adder. So, we will, and you can see the, I believe you have the same one I do, three, three columns? You see FY21 and FY22?
Yes.
Yes, all right. What you don't have, though, is FY23 and 24, which we have projected going forward that that's going to be righted, but we know we have to take a year of being in the, in the red.
Well, you got FY20 and 22, but financially, in terms of, you have a stabilization fund or an investment?
We have, yes, we have invested $150,000 and that's earning, you'll actually see the interest go, jump up to $6,000 on the, on the interest income line. That's an investment at a good rate and then we have $180,000, which we just don't touch.
Okay, good. I'll make that motion. We extend the adder.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second to extend the round one adder to FY2022. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes by a vote of three to zero.
Thank you. We'll get the letter to Dan and he'll be able to.
And thank you for everything that you do.
Well, thank, thank your energy committee and Rich and the hard work that your people are doing.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Okay, next slide, I'm 715. Community Preservation Committee Project Update. Gary and Company.
My name is Gary Ellis. I am Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee for the town of Yarmouth. The Community Preservation Committee appreciates the opportunity to present to the board and the residents of the town of Yarmouth, the analysis of what the impact of the proposed 50% funding cut would have on the CPA and the projected demand over the next five years.
I agree.
Is this working? The community and staff have worked diligently on this analysis. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce each member and recognize what changed and recognize their dedication to improving Yarmouth's community and quality of life through the voter-approved CPA funding. Of course, I am Gary Ellis. Tom Kelly, our alleged member. Susan Barretta from Recreation, I don't know if Susan is here. Christine Margliozano from our Open Space Committee. Paul Huggins is our Conservation Commission and Representative. Dorcas McKirkin from, regarding from Recreation, I know she is here. Nate Small from the Community Housing Representative is here. Mary Ann Walsh is our Yarmouth Housing Authority Representative and Mike Berry is our Staff As you know, the CPA funds may be spent on four categories of spending, including historic preservation, open space, affordable housing and recreation. As part of our presentation tonight, you will hear from George Slama, representing the Historical Commission, and Christine, representing the Open Space Committee. You've heard from the public and have correspondents from Bob Lawton in your packet that is specific to the affordable housing impact. Now, on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, George will present the committee's analysis of what the impact on the proposed, the proposed 50% funding cut would have on CPA and projected demand over the next five years. George.
My name is George Slama, 14 Lakeland Ave, Principe Four. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to introduce myself to the board and to the residents of Yarmouth. My wife, Margaret Drew, and I began to vacation in South Yarmouth in the 1970s. We came to know and appreciate the natural beauty of the area, the cultural opportunities, as well as the history of the Cape, notably with the arrival of the native peoples who came here to the Cape over 10,000 years ago and the colonial period, which began with the first contact in 1621. We washed ashore when we purchased our home at 14 Lakeland Ave in 1983. We made this our permanent home in 2014 when I retired. My first exposure to the CPA was when I volunteered at the CPA-funded, historically important archaeological digs of the Taylor Bray Farm in 2016 and 2017. This experience ultimately led me to volunteer at the Historical Commission. Given the problem with the video tonight, for the benefit of the residents, I will describe the content of each of the slides. So, this is a follow-on on a meeting in September that the board asked us to do a presentation on what a projected impact of a 50% cut would have on the CPA funding. So, the first slide here presents the CPA funding since the inception of the program from 2006 to 2019. And what the graphic shows is that the, the town has received free money, if you will, which is the state CPA match, which will grow in 2020 due to the new legislation that will double the state match. And what the graphic shows is that the CPA match was, is 29% of the total, which is $8.8 million. And also CPA revenues that the taxpayers, you know, contribute is $21 million. The next slide presents the CPA program again from 2006 to 2019, which indicates and shows the unmitigated success of the program, which produced $77.9 million in community betterment over that time. Again, the pie chart shows that free money from the state and other matching funds, other matching funds totaled $48 million, or 62% of the total. State CPA match was 8.7 of the total, which is 11%. And CPA revenues, again, residents' contribution of taxes is 27%. So, what's shown here is that 73% of the CPA programs equals other people's money, other matching funds plus state CPA funds. The average homeowner in a $330,000 assessed home pays about $309 a year and that's their contribution to the surcharge, but has received about $403 in community value. And what this also indicates is that the return on investment is over 300%, which is the sum of other matching funds and state CPA match. The next slide shows the CPA projects accomplished with significant matching funds and it lists the notable projects according to affordable housing, historic preservation, recreation and open space. And these dozen or so programs totaled CPA investment of about $12.2 million and the matching grant funds totaled $39.8 million. So, for the Community Preservation Act, projected 2020 to 2025, we will present analysis for the funding sources that were impacted by, would be impacted by a 50% CPA cut, namely the five-year projected CPA revenues, the five-year projected CPA demand, multi-phase projects. And these are projects that had phase one costs that have been approved, ongoing and the majority of it is spent. Phase two is large projects that have large follow-on costs. So, the projections that we have for the demand includes a number of projects that, again, were voted by, approved by the board, voted at town meeting and approved at town meeting and, and these are future costs. And the last bullet is reduced CPA funding and for, as Bean counters here, the opportunity cost is, I have my own notes here. So, it's, it's an economic term that for one decision that is made, there could be negative impacts following because of that decision. So, that's an opportunity cost. So, the next slide lists the CPA revenues versus, versus projected demand FY2021. And on this bar chart, we show what the 3%, CPA projected revenues would be for 2021 and they total $1.9 million. This is compared to the projected 50% cut, which would reduce the 3% CPA down to a 1%, 1.5 CPA and that would produce $956,000 in revenues. So, that would represent a $956,000 reduction on the CPA revenues. And what's important to compare that to is there's a bar chart that shows what the total projected demand is over the next five years and that comes out to $4.6 million. And the source of that number was inputs from town departments, committees and other stakeholders. So, the scenarios that are shown here, that the reduction to 1.5 increases the demand gap. So, we would have $955,000 and less to meet that demand. The next slide is CPA state match scenarios, making up the demand shortfall for FY21. And on this bar chart, the first series of numbers show that CPA revenues are made up of two components, the CPA state match and taxpayers' contribution, contribution. So, for FY21, if we maintain the CPA rate at 3%, that would provide $2.3 million in revenues that we could apply to the grants. The next two slides show scenarios of reducing that. And once again, for the scenario that reduces the CPA 50% to 1.5%, revenues drop to $1,147,000. So, there's a little over a million drop. And what's also important to note is, is for the 3%, the CPA match would be $422,000, reducing down to 1.5% CPA revenues would reduce that number to $191,000, increasing what we would need to produce to offset the projected demand. So, once again, dropping to 1.5%.
I have a question. I'm trying, I'm struggling trying to understand the numbers. Is the five-year average demand the annual demand or is that the demand for a five-year period?
Annual.
Annual.
Annual, yep. Well, okay, so I'm, so the annual demand has been $4.5 million and the annual revenue is 2.3, so there's been a shortfall of 2.4 million every year?
Every year.
I think that demands for.
I don't understand.
The millions request.
Those are requests.
Not necessarily.
Those are requests.
So, you, you people never hear what we don't bring forward because we don't have the revenue to do it.
But I think for clarification, to Norm's point, and I think this is perhaps what prompted his question, is that demand figure is about twice what, what the fully funded CPC is with 3% plus the state, the state contribution is about half of the demand.
Yep.
So, best case scenario, that demand's not going to be met. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could add, so we're making up some of that demand here with the state match, we make some of the, the rest of the demand up by other matching funds. So, in that, in that second pie chart where we show the big gray slice of other matching funds, that's on top of what the state gives us. So, we go to park grants. We require applicants to put in some money, too. That builds up here. We never get to the 4.5 area, but we do with other matching funds make up some difference.
Okay. Okay.
At breakfast.
Yeah, so essentially, when we're getting less, we can ask the applicant, we can ask more, but a lot of the projects won't happen.
Yeah, we understand you don't fund everything that comes before you or you don't necessarily fund the full ask on a particular project.
And a lot of stuff's conditional upon them applying for these matching grants, throwing their own funds into it to get to what they're looking for.
Thank you. So, the next slide shows approved projects with the large follow-on costs. And what the slide indicates is that these projects, the Taylor Bray Farm barn, the Baxter Griss Mill work on the dam, the Sandy Pond Recreation Project, the Flax Pond Recreation Project and the Drive-In, those five projects that have been approved, voted on, ongoing and spending has taken place, total about $11.5 million of follow-on cost. So, again, another economic term is that the $4 million is sunk cost and this, these costs, you know, need to be paid in the future for these projects to continue on to fruition. The next slide is additional demand for CPA spending over the next five years. What's listed on the slide is a box that describes additional demand for housing, trust, other housing and open space. And the bar chart shows for housing trust, there's $1.4 million. And the bar chart shows for housing trust, there's 1.4 million demand, 1.42 million demand, and revenues required of $142.5, $142.5 million. Other housing, already approved by the voters, $4.82 million, and future demand of $4.0 million. And finally, open space has already been approved by voters, a total of $2.8 million, and follow-on costs of $1.5 million. So voters have approved, yes?
I just want to ask, where, where these additional demand, where those numbers are coming from? How do we know what the additional demand is in the future?
Mike.
So we provided you with a memo in your packet for today's meeting. That memo has a annex, which is a table of all of our anticipated future projects that came from departments, committees, and stakeholders. So that list is available to you.
So additional demand just for, is this a one-year, just for one-year, or for...
No, it could be.
Some of the projects are one-time projects. A project like Sandy Pond will probably take five or more years to do.
Okay.
Same thing with Flax Pond, it's going to be many phases.
So we're making an assumption based on, on potential, potential projects of what could be in the, in the future? Okay.
In the case of the housing ones, the bars actually show what we spent in the previous five years, and if we wanted to stay at that pace, it would be an equal amount of housing placed for the trust. This is what we gave in the last five years. If we want to continue to give to the trust at that rate, that's going to be the demand.
So the next slide shows lost CPA revenues and state match, again, indicating what the impact would be of a cut from 3% down to 1.5%. And FY 21, there'd be a shortfall in state match of $231,000, and FY 22 of $236,000, FY 23 of $242,000, FY 24, $249,000, and FY 25, $256,000, for a total of 1.215 reduction in lost revenues, excuse me, lost state match. And again, that's, that's free money. And then, what's also indicated is, excuse me, the loss of CPA revenues, which would total $5,024 million. And the year total loss would be $6.2 million. So the final slide deals with the opportunity cost. And again, what, what will not be able to done, be done if we made a decision to reduce the CPA funding from 3% to 1.5%. And up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see a summary, which lists that the loss of the CPA tax surcharge would be $5 million, the loss of the CPA state match would be $1.2 million, and so a subtotal loss of $6.2 million over a five-year period. And there is a 3% multiplier factor here, and that's based on the, since the inception, as to what we have experienced in actual monies of $18,720, $20 million. So the potential loss of CPA funds is a total of $24.9 million. And there is a bar chart that graphically shows these numbers, where we have the 1.5% loss on the CPA tax charge of $5 million, the loss of CPA matching funds, which is the 1.2, and that's made up of a 3% community incentive. And so the state provides an additional 3% to those communities that fund the maximum. So that's, again, free money, we lose that. And what the graphic down in the lower right-hand corner shows that if, if we cut the CPA by, you know, $5 million over five years, and the associated benefit goes to, potentially to the WIF. And obviously, the WIF does not have a multiplier effect, and that's, that's what we'd see the, you know, the, the money coming down to. Okay. All right about that, looking for my notes. So in, in summary, the Historical Commission relies on the CPA funds, because we don't have a capital budget. So it's, it's critical, given that we have the number of historical buildings that we have here, that, that these funds are very critical. So we ask the Commission to, the Board, to keep, keep that in mind, and, and I'm done. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Marzigliano. I, I'm going to make a short presentation tonight. The original 10-minute presentation has been given to the selectmen, and I just asked that you take a few minutes at your leisure to review the entire presentation. I am here speaking on behalf of myself. However, I am chairman of the Open Space Committee and the Open Space Representative to the CPA Committee. I'm a member of the Yarmouth Conservation Trust Board, and I'm the Open Space Representative to the Land Use Committee. My volunteerism in New York included being chair for 15 years of a Citizens Advisory Committee overseeing the operations of the Cedar Creek Sewerage Treatment Plant. So I am well aware of the need to prevent nitrogen discharge into our waters. We are all here tonight regarding the proposed decrease in CPA funding that the selectmen have proposed. As a person concerned with the water quality of our town, of course, I'm for sewers, but not at the cost of reducing CPA funds. Open space projects involve the acquisition of property, and real estate is not cheap. And so funds need to be accumulated over years for many of the acquisitions. For example, the historic affordable housing and open space categories each receive only 10% of the CPA funds generated. In a year that each of these categories receives about $210,000, 10% of $2,202,000, it is difficult to propose a project that'll cost $1 million. Just last week, I was contacted about a property that has an assessment of $1,001,000 and is for sale for $1,005,000, that happens to abut one of the town's well fields. And expanding the property around our well fields is important to prevent nitrogen discharge into our groundwater. This would delete open space funds and cause CPA to be very creative in finding state tax credits for the owner, as well as prospective conservation grants that would allow us to proceed with this acquisition. With a proposed cut in CPA funds in half, do you think that a willing seller would be willing to wait 10 years to sell his property? Land acquisitions are not cheap, and open space must accumulate funds over several years for many of its acquisitions. So open space needs not only your environmental support, but your dollar support in keeping CPA funds at their maximum level. CPA has been the leader in protecting our groundwater with the acquisition of properties surrounding our ponds, streams, bays, wetlands, and properties adjacent to well fields. One interesting section of the handout prepared by the Water Resources Advisory Committee was regarding pond health assessment, whereby five ponds were assessed for water quality. Only Long Pond identified as requiring sewer-ing at this time. This is because Land Bank acquired many of the properties surrounding Dennis Pond, preventing nitrogen intrusion that would have come with development. Long Pond's water quality is poor because of the development around the pond, discharging nitrogen into its waters. CPA has been the forerunner in protecting our water resources by acquiring sensitive properties to protect our water quality. And we may have to look into more properties that are sensitive to our water quality Recent editorials and articles in the Cape Cod Times advocating that when our sensitive parcels of open space become available, they should be preserved as open space. Such opportunities come up infrequently, but should be considered in protecting our groundwater. A recent My View commentary from a Dennis CPA committee member reminded us all that CPA funds are the people's money, and that's why it is the people at town meeting who should determine the proposed usage of their funds that are taken out of their taxes. I ask you to reconsider decreasing CPA funds, for to do so is to forfeit $3 for every $1 spent by CPA funds. In other words, $3 million forfeited for every $1 million in CPA funds. Water is our most precious resource, and we need to protect it. We do that by starting the sewer project and by protecting the precious water supplies in the rest of Yarmouth. It's not one or the other, it's both. Thank you.
Thank you. This is George Schlammer again. I want to do a proper closing. Thank you very much. The Historical Commission was created by the town in order to preserve, protect, and develop Yarmouth's historical and archaeological assets. The Commission sent a letter to the Board on September 9, 2019, concerning, concerning the Community Preservation Surcharge, excuse me. The Commission noted that the CPA grants have enhanced a wide range of town historic assets that contribute to the education and enjoyment of town citizens and visitors alike. The CPA is the budget for the Historical Commission, as well as for other committees represented in the Community Preservation Committee. The projects accomplished with CPA and its matching funds build quality of life and community character in our town. CPA projects make Yarmouth look good and encourage folks to live or visit here. Based on these sentiments, the Commission requested that the Select Board should make every effort to continue to fund the CPA at a level of support for historic preservation work going forward. Thank you.
Okay, and in summary, I'd like to thank George, Mike, and Christine for their presentations tonight. And you can see how passionate our committee members are by our attendance, amount of time we put into it, and many of the other residents who are here tonight, and taxpayers. I hope that the presentation and comments tonight helps the Board of Selectmen to see the benefits of the CPA program and to understand the impact of a 50% cut to our budget. As noted in CP's letter, CPC's letter to the Board on November 7, 2019, much of the CPA's program's success over the last 13 years has been accomplished with other people's money, namely, the matching grants that are attracted by the CPA, the seed money that is generated by the 3% real estate, real estate tax surcharge. The state, in particular, encourages communities to allot the maximum 3% to CPA by providing additional matching grants to the 3% communities. This free money would be lost or greatly impacted if we go below 3%. CPA funds became available 13 years ago when the Board recommended the creation of the CPA 3% real estate, real estate tax surcharge, the maximum allowed by the state and the voters approved at the CPA town meeting. Our committee believes that our analysis shows that the CPA program provides a return on investment unmatched anywhere in government. The benefits to the quality of life and the community character are substantial. Any undercutting of this highly successful program makes little sense financially or culturally, and for our town. And I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come back tonight and talk about this, and, you know, how we go from here. But we do appreciate the time, and I hope we've provided you with the information for the future impact of what this might do to us.
Does anybody on the Board have any questions of Gary or any of the members that spoke?
I have comments. I don't have questions, really. I appreciate everybody and their commentary. Some of the other communities have looked at this. I think it was important, I still think it's important to, to look at this. I don't disagree with a single word that was said here tonight. However, however, I find it a little interesting that the projects that are outlined here, Taylor Bay Farm, Baxter Griss Mill, Sandy Pond, Flax Pond, the Drive-In, are all surrounded by bodies of water. And while every project that we've done, and every project potentially we could do, is important, I think if we don't fix our wastewater issue, then it's really, you know, it's a tough position for us to be in, because we need to move forward with wastewater for our environment, for our economy. All of that, if we don't have that, you know, our recreation space, what, what is that really worth to our families if we don't have clean water? So it's very, it's hard to, it's hard to say we want to take out of one hand and put into another, because that's what, kind of the position that we feel like, I'm sure you think that we're putting in. I think it's up to the people of the town to say what's important. Unfortunately, what people might not remember is, we came back with a, many years ago, the wastewater proposal that our community faced was so expensive that the people of the town turned it down. So if we don't fix wastewater, I'm not sure what the other solutions are, but we have to get creative in trying to find a way that we can have it all. I mean, I want it all, believe me, nobody here wants to take money from CPA, it's a great program. But when you, when you think about the potential of raising taxes to, to be able to do the, the wastewater plan with everything on the horizon, I'm afraid it's going to fail again.
That was our point tonight, in all respect, and I agree with what you're saying. There's nobody on our committee who doesn't agree with the wastewater. The, our point is, you're taking the entire hit to CPA.
Not the entire hit. The money's, there's, there's a variety of, of potential sources.
There are.
This is one potential source.
Yes.
We haven't made a decision.
I know. And that's what we're here to talk.
No, and I appreciate...
We're not going to talk about it tonight, but we wanted to point that out to you. Because no other committee in this town has done more to protect our water resources than CPA. If you look at the Parker's Rivers Bridge, Baxter, you know, that's all about preserving the water, along with the Drive-In site, Taylor Bay Farm, they're all protecting the water resource. And a lot of that seed money has come from CPA.
I don't disagree with you, Gary.
And we're all on the same.
We really are. We're, and it's unfortunate that we're in this, us against them, because really what we need to do is come up with a solution together. We need to make it all happen.
Yeah.
And it's important to all of us for our quality. We need to make it all happen, and it's important to all of us for our quality of life to have these wonderful benefits that CPA provides and also have wastewater. Unfortunately, we have a demographic of people that are on fixed incomes, and wastewater, the wastewater solution is very, very expensive. So, we're looking at all avenues at this point in time to be able to achieve that goal without really impacting the taxes so we can get it done.
Right. So, part of, you know, a lot of the projects we do that protect the water resource, that protect the waterfront, and our wellfields and all that have been CPA projects. So, ultimately, when we do do our sewer projects, and then we go back and we test the water for nitrogen, what we're asking for is a lot of, our money goes to the easy pickings to preserve that water versus just the sewer. And I know that there's a meld in between there that works, but we're saying the money spent on a lot of our projects goes a lot towards cleaning up that water over.
Absolutely. But one of the pieces too, that we're hopeful, and, you know, I know that you guys have all been involved with the presentations that Rich has done, but one of the things that we're hopeful for as well is an increase in property values, especially with our commercial properties who are able to actually invest in their properties and expand. And when that happens also, that whether it's 3% or 1.5%, that potential number will grow. So, you know, hopefully if we all work together, it may be a short-term impact to CPA if this is what the town wants to do, but in the long-term, potentially, it could actually benefit CPA. I know we'll miss out on some of the state funding. Well, tonight is the first time I've heard that there's new potential legislation from...
It's not a potential, it's already been passed.
Well, I haven't, I haven't.
We don't know the exact figure yet, but it's already been approved by the state legislature.
Well, the last I heard that the number was going down every year.
It went up.
Well, I haven't heard that yet, so that's information that is...
So, we're the first one to reduce it by 50% at the very time that the state is increasing our match.
Yep, that's great, and that's great news. So, we'd still get a match with 1.5%. I'm not saying that that is what we're going to do. I'm just saying we are, and potentially we would have a more rigorous commercial base of real estate that would increase that number. So, we got to look at the whole picture. We really, we all have to really work together.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Norm, do you have any questions or comments?
You know, a lot of what I might say would be a duplicate of what Tracy just talked about. You know, I think we've, we've got a difficult balancing act here, and, you know, ultimately, I think our taxpayers have to decide. But, you know, we have tremendous demands for new funding, not only the demand that you've demonstrated here for future projects, but demand for funding for schools, for DPW projects, down the list of the things that we have committed to and that the taxpayers have committed to. And, you know, Tracy talked a little bit about the fact that a substantial part of our population is our unfixed incomes. Doesn't escape me that a lot of the people in this room, like myself, have a lot of gray hair and are here supporting the expenditure of, continued expenditure of these funds. But nonetheless, we also have to recognize the economics of our town. And the economics of our town are that we have an average income level that is quite a bit less than the state average. And those folks in our community is heavily dependent on resort-based jobs that typically pay at lower levels. So, we've got a lot of people that are really living on the edge, and to ask them to fund wastewater as well as continue to fund CPA projects, I think is a real push. So, that's where I think our Board is coming from at this point.
And I think what we're basically asking is to look at, instead of taking the entire hit to CPA, maybe there's other funding sources.
There are substantial other funding sources that are being proposed in the wastewater funding.
We want you to look carefully at that.
As well as...
Because of the matching funds that we're creating.
As well as substantial user fees and fees for usage, which will fall heavily on those households. So, there's going to be substantial additional burden to many households in this community as a result of the wastewater commitments that we're making, and those come in addition to the tax demands that are being placed on them because of schools, and I won't go through the whole list of projects. So, where does, where does it happen and where does it stop? We've got to come to a position where we are not constantly demanding more and more and more from our taxpayers, and all we're trying to do in this is to create a balance.
Yep.
And I think that that's, it's not an easy situation and an easy decision, but we can't view our revenues as continually increasing and people's incomes as continually available for use for municipal projects. We can't look at it that way. We've got to recognize that if people, if we want people to live in this town, they have to be able to afford it. And affording it means keeping the taxes within a reasonable level, and that's what we're grappling with.
Thank you. Ma'am, you had something you wanted to say?
I want to make sure you do understand.
Why don't you get up there so we can hear you? Thank you.
I want to make sure that you understand, any money you take out of the CPC, you're devaluing your money, because if you took a million dollars and you're trying to put it towards wastewater, if you kept it in the CPC, we could leverage those funds for you and get more money, and I don't think you understand that.
No, we do. We understand that, and that was very graphically pointed out in the written materials and in the presentation.
And this CPC funds were designated to four categories for a reason, to make sure that those items were taken care of, which we have done, the CPC committee has done. And we've saved the assets of this town, and the economic impact of all of that has to be thought about too. When people come here, there's a lot of places to visit. I was in an office, I opened up Cape Cod Life, and I looked through, 50% of the places to come and visit were places that we worked on. This committee funded, and it brings businesses into town, restaurants, you can't knock that. I think it's foolish.
I don't think anybody's knocking it.
No, no, I just think, you don't under, if you're going to...
We all understand exactly what you're trying to say. The problem is if we don't have clean water, all those assets are for nothing, and we don't have enough affordable housing in this town.
Then you don't understand what I'm saying, Tracy.
Values are going to be nothing.
What I'm saying, every dollar you take out, all right?
I do understand what you're saying, Mary Ann.
You lose the ability for us to get you leverage funds for projects in the future, because we can still work with wastewater, but we'd be more valuable to being, having the money.
Thank you. We understand the concept of leverage. Mark?
Will you give it up? Have you given it up?
We're not necessarily giving up anything. We haven't made a decision. We're...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to thank you, Gary, and your committee for your very thorough presentation tonight. This is incredibly helpful.
There's a lot to digest there, and it was hard to get it into a form that you could understand, which is why I did the pie charts. We go through figures forever, and they're almost too much for me.
We appreciate that. No, that, this has all been very, very helpful. As many of you know, several months ago, we were presented with a cost recovery plan, a plan that would help us sort of examine our options for funding a comprehensive wastewater treatment plan for the town. Phase one, just phase one alone, is roughly 130-some-odd million dollars. What that means in terms of debt service for the town is something close to 4.5 million dollars annually. Some of you may recall that at the last town meeting in which we addressed wastewater, the idea of using property taxes as a way to fund our comprehensive wastewater plan was not necessarily well-supported at town meeting. I think that's a kind way to put it. And so, this plan has largely looked at a range of options that is available to the town, a range of options available to the community, and I think as a Board, before we wanted to make any decisions or recommendations, we asked you to do an analysis to help us understand if some of the suggestions of maybe splitting the community, the surcharge and allocating some of that to a wastewater infrastructure fund and CPC, what kind of impact that would have. That kind of split would accomplish a lot in terms of what was recommended in the cost recovery plan that we were presented with, but what we didn't know is what kind of impacts it would have on CPC. And I think at our meeting, the last time we were together, I think we gave you and your committee an enormous amount of praise for the work that you have done in vetting and reviewing and approving CPC projects or CPA projects and presenting them to the Board, and ultimately, the success is demonstrated on town meeting floor because the voters have overwhelmingly supported your work as well. So, none of this should be treated in any way as criticism. In fact, you know, your analysis is exactly the kind of information that we need, because ultimately, we're going to have to make a decision. And instead of recommendations, and again, it's, we're talking about a 4.5 million dollar debt service that we are going to have to figure out how to pay for. And that's a significant amount of money.
And we tried not to go into that tonight, but like a half percent.
No, but I think it's important, let me just finish. I think it's important for everybody to understand the significance of the challenge. This is not an easy problem. Those meetings on easy problems are not as well-attended as this one is. So, I just think it's important for you to know, I think we've got what we asked for, so thank you. We gave you a charge, we made a request. You've done yeoman's work, outstanding work in presenting us, all we need to know. Now, what we need to do is wrestle with this, review this further, digest it. We may, as a Board, have more questions for you, and we may want some of you to come back to help clarify some things.
We'd be glad to do that.
But I think you've done your job, and you've done it well as usual, so I want to thank you.
Just to let you know, a half a percent to us is a big deal.
We get it. We got it. We heard you. We got the report. It's all in black and white.
And nobody's been better, by the way, in communicating to us than Richard.
No, we value Richard's work as well.
He's been great. He's been before us anytime we ask, and we've been trying to work together on this. But this, what we gave you tonight is what I hope you gave us the time, and it gave you everything you need, and we'll be glad to come back anytime.
We appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Gary, I also want to thank you and your committee for providing this very detailed analytical presentation. I think it's going to be very helpful for us to assess what any decision we make has on the community preservation front. As Mark, I agree with pretty much what Mark said. These are very difficult issues to try to reach a balance on. One is wastewater, which is critically important, and as you said, the interest of the Community Preservation Act go to the character of your community and the quality of life in your community, and I fully agree with that 100%. If there was a way to do both without, you know, impacting, you know, the tax base, as Mark said, we wouldn't have as many people here. It'd be a very easy thing to do. But the last time that this matter was brought before the voters and it was linked to property taxes, they voted it down. So, we're looking for an alternative approach, hopefully something that taxpayers will find easier to support than what was brought before them the last time, and we're not picking on CPC or looking solely at CPC. We're looking at all possible funding sources. We're looking at the revenues from the short-term rental taxes. We're looking at trust funds, capital stabilization funds, hookup charges, commercial charges, surcharges, all kinds of things. So, I for one am not taking the presentation that you made tonight lightly or being dismissive of all of the important things that you have raised before us. You've given us a lot to think about.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Like I said, we'd be glad to come back anytime, and hopefully we can all reach an agreement and get both done.
Okay, thank you. Yarmouth Grave Stone Preservation. Where the hell's the guy?
Like I said, we'd be glad to come back anytime and hopefully we can all reach an agreement and get both done.
Okay, thank you. Yarmouth Gravestone Preservation. Where the hell's the good guy?
Our foundation is, ah, aha. Now that works. This is a big, you know, kind of welcome to our world kind of situation. I mean, this is, this is what we do. I know that you all see the Yarmouth golf courses and you're very passionate about your own town golf courses and that's appropriate and what we would expect. But Barry and I, we spend our lives going around the country, looking at all the towns and cities and counties and their municipal golf courses, and that's a big part of the work that we do. And we hope that some of that experience, you know, will be able to help the town of Yarmouth in the future operation of your golf facilities. One thing I'll highlight is our independence, is that as the National Golf Foundation, we are not operators of golf courses. We don't maintain golf courses, we don't finance golf courses, we don't design golf courses, we don't construct golf courses. We are simply a consultancy to provide insight and opinion to help you make the right decision for your facilities in the town of Yarmouth.
Or another way to put it is there's no secondary payday, there's nothing in terms of future payday, or as we say in the South, we don't have a dog in this fight.
Yes, pure as it driven snow.
As best we can be. I can tell you, you know, just a thought is that, you know, the town of Yarmouth is in the golf business. And what we can tell you from that experience is that the golf business is a very tough business to be in. And you're at the mercy of a lot of things you can't control. It's a very high fixed cost business and weather can ruin you for a year. I mean, there's a lot of challenges to running a public golf course and it should not be presumed that profitability and success is the norm. In fact, I have documented on a number of different projects that it's my estimation that about two-thirds of all municipally-owned golf courses in the United States are operating in the red. There's only about one-third that can operate in profitability. So I think when you consider all charges and capital and administrative charges and overhead and all of these things are considered, it's not common for municipal golf to be profitable. It's a different world from what it was in the 1990s and some years ago when it was different, the case was different. So what we were brought in to do and what we were hired to do by the town is to prepare a business plan and help you perform a broader strategic review of golf in the town. But one of the things that was pointed out to us early in this process was, it was kind of an overriding goal that the town had presented to us, that the golf courses need to be self-sustaining onsite, that they need to repay previous capital that they had borrowed from the town, and that they need to fund all of their future capital. And as I had just mentioned, that criteria right there alone is not common in public sector golf, anywhere in the country. And it's certainly not common in Cape Cod, among the other towns who operate golf courses. So it's certainly something that we want to kind of keep in mind as we move forward. But we certainly have kept it in mind and have tried to prepare the best business plan that we can for you in terms of what you can achieve so that you, help you make decisions for the future of these golf courses based on those operations. Just the activities that we conducted as part of our review here, we spent some time at your town golf courses, touring the facilities and reviewing the physical condition. We studied the market and other external factors that impact your ability to sell rounds of golf and memberships at these facilities. We've reviewed the historical data and we prepared some recommendations and made projections of financial performance, which we would like to share with you in this presentation this evening. So we'll start with kind of a summary of kind of where you are with your existing courses. Barry, I'll let you start with that.
Sure. And as Richard mentioned, we toured, spent extensive time at both properties, Bayberry and Bass River. In looking at them, certainly Bayberry is the newer of the two golf courses. Lynx was the most recent addition in 1995. Good location with access. I know there are challenges with regard to signage that's allowed under Cape Cod rules and regulations, so you can't post massive signage unfortunately, which, you know, is a bit of a detriment. The clubhouse, while it's small, highly functional, works for the purpose in which it was designed, you know, as long as it's maintained cosmetically. We didn't see anything that we thought was significant that required, you know, immediate attention. In terms of the maintenance condition, when I was here last, it was late July, early August, it was about a week before the mass golf pub Lynx. And I have to tell you, the golf course was in incredible condition and, you know, I want to say kudos to Scott Gilmore and his staff for the condition that they presented and they really put the talent in good light. So it looked phenomenal. And I'll tell you, as a golfer, you know, we can't do this frankly and not be golfers, just as a golfer, you know, Richard had not seen the golf course until today and I said, Bayberry's really good. You agreed. I mean, it is a terrific golf course and, you know, in looking at it, I think it's among, if not the best public golf course, it's darn near the best that we see among the competitive set that we analyzed for this project. And the Lynx is a bit unique and that is built on a landfill. We're seeing a fair number of those that have been built in the last 25, 30 years, serves a purpose, has some unique nuances. You can't do trees on it because it permeates the cap, things like that. Another good golf course. I think with a little more exposure, people would really come to like the Lynx perhaps more than the level of notoriety it's currently receiving, you know, just from what I've seen of it. And then again, looking at Bayberry, minimal numbers of improvements are really needed. The irrigation system on the Lynx, it's running at a very, very low level of pressure currently due to an issue, so it does take six to eight hours approximately to water the whole golf course that's running probably 3X longer than it should. So that should be addressed. Some cart path issues where it's not continuous cart paths, not a huge amount. And then the range, we talked about leveling that because you have multiple tiers. I think there's five separate tiers on the range. And we felt like perhaps if some of that was leveled out a little more, you end up with one more teeing area and more usable space. And I think that is a viable option as well. And then the maintenance equipment at the facility also is a bit dated and the maintenance team would really benefit from new equipment. It would improve the ability to maintain, also minimize or reduce the amount of staff hours, certainly from a maintenance standpoint and the mechanic constantly repairing equipment. And there's not much in capital reserve or reserve for equipment if a piece goes down. So something to consider there. You know, with regard to Bass River, you know, old golf course built in the 1900s, has an influence from Donald Ross, the noted Scottish designer. Good layout, unbelievably fabulous location right there directly on the Bass River. Unfortunately, due to the age of the course and the lack of capital improvements over the years, there really hasn't been much infrastructure improvement done. The irrigation system was done in '04, but there are certainly drainage issues and the need for renovation of the golf course, pretty much in its entirety, being the primary pieces, tees, greens, you know, fairways. So just to get it back to what looks to be, you know, a better golf course than it currently appears. So demand there seems like it has dropped some at Bass River in the recent years. In looking at Bass River and where we see the needs being, we estimate it's about $1.6 to $1.8 million in capital improvements. And then again, not all of it has to be done at once, but we do see, you know, $1.1 to $1.3 million that should be done probably in what we would call a tier one or immediate need improvement.
Can I ask you a question? What kind of a timeframe would that translate to a tier one improvement? You'd be talking a year or two, something like that?
Ideally, in a perfect world, if you were able to settle the funding issue and determine where the funds would come from, I would say as quickly as possible to get it renovated to create what I'll call a better golf experience for the players, be it members or daily fee or public players. Because it really does need it, you know, but it's a unique golf course, it's a fun golf course, but it is dated. There's no way to beat around the bush on that one.
One of the other areas that we took upon to review as part of the business plan to really give you some good, strong insight is the external environment within which you operate here in Yarmouth. And, you know, a couple of things really did jump out at us that we want to share with you. First, a little bit about some of the just general market and external environment issues and Barry, I'll chime in a little more on some of the competitive issues. But I think the key issue for us is that, you know, golfers in Yarmouth are not increasing. Golfers in Yarmouth and in Cape Cod in general are kind of aging out and they're not being replaced by younger golfers. And I think that in the longer term for you as an operator of golf facilities by the town, that's going to present a real challenge in years to come if developing new players and bringing new people into these facilities isn't a key. And we'll talk about that a little more in some of our recommendations. Obviously, your economy is driven by tourism. We got the number from the Tourism Board here, four and a half million visitors to Barnstable County annually. That was a 2016 number, but there are certainly a lot of golfers who come in. So I think that that's the flip side of it. So while the permanent resident golfers who live in Yarmouth may be on the decline, there are certainly tens of thousands of golfers who are visiting Yarmouth every year in the summer. And I think that that's a key market for you. You know, the demographic profile from Yarmouth is, it corresponds well with high demand for golf, that's a good thing. But the overall balance between golf demand and supply, you know, is not favorable for golf courses. We have often identified that there should be about 4,000 permanent resident golfers for every 18 holes of golf. In your market, there's about 800 golfers for every 18 holes of golf. So the ratio is not good. There's a lot of public golf available on Cape Cod. It makes it very competitive for your facilities. And again, with only 800 permanent resident golfers for each 18 holes, it really stresses the importance of the tourist golfer for your facilities and their health.
Plus the seasonal residents as well.
Right, yeah, tourism seasonal residents. And you have a short golf season, right? So you only play golf, for us, I think it probably is a six or seven month season. We did observe people playing golf today, so.
We're a hardy bunch up here.
You're a little harderer bunch than us Florida people might be.
Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, we talked to the one person, he was Canadian.
[laughing]
Sorry.
That was a good one.
Yep. So go ahead with the competitive.
Now with regard to the competitive set, we looked at what I'll call, I think it was 12 different golf courses. The bulk of your competition here really comes from all the other municipalities directly in the immediate area, call it within 12 to 15 miles. Again, an interesting group of golf courses, some of them are also very good. On average, they're generating about 33,000 rounds per year for the most part. It's interesting though, when I look at the facilities with 36 holes, they tend to be doing much better. You know, they're averaging somewhere between total system, 70 to 74,000 rounds a year, looking at courses, say in Dennis and in Barnstable. That's significant because in the last fiscal year, you all generated a little over 60,000. So they're, you know, they're operating at, you know, 15% more in terms of overall round generation. So that's, you know, you can see there's a differential there. Now, as we mentioned, our opinion on Bayberry is great golf course, very, very favorable to the competition. And Bass River certainly needs work to get it into a higher echelon and really to get it some more notoriety. The Yarmouth courses surprisingly were a little expensive relative to the other municipal golf courses for published public rates. And in some cases, for example, at Bass River, I'm sorry, Bayberry, that's appropriate. It might be a little overpriced. However, at Bass River, you know, I'm sorry, it's not a $95 golf experience in peak season, it's just not. And you're overpriced there in our opinion. And then again, the other thing too that's critical to the competitive set is really only Yarmouth and Sandwich are the only true enterprise funds that are operating that way in a strict enterprise system. Some of the others are saying that they're a quasi-enterprise fund, but they still have the capacity to go to the city, town, excuse me, and say, we're short, we're going to do a capital improvement project, we need $350,000. And, you know, monies are available pretty readily. And so that's not an enterprise fund in, you know, any way, shape or form. They have the safety net.
Right, it's a mix. And some of them are completely general fund operations, taxpayer-funded operations, where they're not necessarily required to make a profit, which as I mentioned earlier in this presentation, is rare for municipal golf. And then there are some that are kind of in the middle that are quasi, they're trying to have enterprise funds, but there's always that safety net for them. And then there's Yarmouth and Sandwich that are essentially trying to be pure enterprise funds where it, like you said at the very beginning, I mean, it's got to cover everything.
Where does Sandwich stand?
Sandwich is kind of in the middle. They have an enterprise fund, but they do provide some capital. I think we learned that there were some capital requests that were met by the town there.
So they don't operate in a profitable manner?
They're not making money anyway.
No.
And they're, out of all the golf courses we looked at, unfortunately, they're generating the lowest amount of rounds at 28,000 in the previous fiscal year. So they're not killing it. You know, the other, one other point too I'll make with regard to, you know, where you see golf, it has to do with your ultimate strategic position on what does golf mean to the town? In that, is it a recreational amenity that's a nice to have or is it something that adds to the overall quality of life and we see it has a benefit and therefore, does it make sense for the town to perhaps support some aspect of it because it does help the town, it helps generate tourism monies and things like that? So there's certainly factors for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add a point?
Sure.
One of the things that you should just be aware of is that for many communities, the Department of Revenue, that's the state agency that oversees municipal finances, they have often recommended to municipalities that they create enterprise funds for the purposes of these operations. Brewster just did a comprehensive financial management review and that was one of the top recommendations of the Department of Revenue. So it's not as if the communities have, I mean, they certainly have the discretion, but they're very much being discouraged lately for doing that. So you should just be aware of that.
Right. Yeah, no, we are aware of that and it's, we've watched it kind of go back and forth in our tenure, that there were times when they were pushed for them to be enterprise funds and then there's a push to get away from enterprise funds and then it goes back to wanting to be enterprise funds. It really depends on how successful or sustainable your enterprise fund can be, I think is a key piece to that. But yeah, that's, we've definitely observed that.
And one thing, one point I'll make about Brewster is they run what I'll call a pretty rugged T-shirt in that they allocate a pretty significant percentage of their rounds, leave it open for daily fee play, not for member play, obviously to generate rounds at a higher rate. So, and they have done a pretty good job on one, they have two courses, same property. One of them, they run 80% of the rounds or times are reserved just for guests, only 20% on one of the courses then is for members. And then on the other facility, again, same property, it's a 50/50 split alternating every time. So it's kind of unique how they do that and keep that balance. You can get away with that more easily when both courses are on the same property.
In your experience, looking at other communities that have a high tourism base in terms of the, what is supporting the local economy, have you seen any instances where there's tourism funding from the businesses, the resorts, the restaurants of the golf courses? Are there any funds set aside from those sources in any way? Have you seen any of that happening?
I'll start. I haven't seen that in terms of funding, direct funding. But I have seen a lot of cooperation among those types of organizations and entities to support the golf facility however they can, whether if it's a lodging establishment, making sure that they keep the local municipal golf course front and center for their guests and making sure that it's available to them and that they can arrange tee times and in some cases even by large blocks of tee times that they can turn around and sell to their hotel guests, things like that. Cooperation among restaurateurs, local restaurateurs with the golf facility to provide food and beverage support, in some cases even operating directly, the food and beverage operation at the local municipal golf course. But in terms of direct funding, I don't see it as much.
So going to one of your recommendations of restructuring the T-shirt availability for more retail rounds, that would directly address that issue with, you know, certainly the lodges where they might have more rounds available to them. And that might be helpful in generating more revenue for the golf operations as well as perhaps improving the guest experience.
Absolutely. I mean, ultimately-
purposes of these operations. Brewster just did a comprehensive financial management review, and that was one of the top recommendations of the Department of Revenue. So it's not as if the communities have, I mean, they certainly have the discretion, but they're very much being discouraged lately for doing that. So you should just be aware of that.
Right. Yeah, no, we are aware of that, and it's, we've watched it kind of go back and forth in our tenure, that there were times when they were pushed for them to be enterprise funds, and then there's a push to get away from enterprise funds, and then it goes back to wanting to be enterprise funds. It really depends on how successful or sustainable your enterprise fund can be, I think, is a key piece to that. But yeah, that's, we've definitely observed that.
And one thing, one point I'll make about Brewster is they run what I'll call a pretty rugged T-shirt in that they allocate a pretty significant percentage of their rounds, leave it open for daily fee play, not for member play, obviously, to generate rounds at a higher rate. So, and they have done a pretty good job on one, they have two courses, same property. One of them, they run 80% of the rounds or times are reserved just for guests, only 20% on one of the courses then is for members. And then on the other facility, again, same property, it's a 50-50 split alternating every time. So it's kind of unique how they do that and keep that balance. You can get away with that more easily when both courses are on the same property.
In your experience, looking at other communities that have a high tourism base in terms of the, what is supporting the local economy, have you seen any instances where there's tourism funding from the businesses, the resorts, the restaurants, sort of, of the golf courses? Are there any funds set aside from those sources in any way? Have you seen any of that happening?
I'll start. I haven't seen that in terms of funding, direct funding. But I have seen a lot of cooperation among those types of organizations and entities to support the golf facility however they can, whether it's a lodging establishment, making sure that they keep the local municipal golf course front and center for their guests, and making sure that it's available to them, and that they can arrange tee times, and in some cases even by-large blocks of tee times that they can turn around and sell to their hotel guests, things like that. Cooperation among restaurateurs, local restaurateurs with the golf facility to provide food and beverage support, in some cases even operating directly, the food and beverage operation at the local municipal golf course. But in terms of direct funding, I don't see it as much.
So going to one of your recommendations of restructuring the T-shirt availability for more retail rounds, that would directly address that issue with, you know, certainly the lodges where they might have more rounds available to them. And that might be helpful in generating more revenue for the golf operations as well as perhaps improving the guest experience.
Absolutely. I mean, ultimately, if you're a lodging establishment, I mean, it's heads-on beds, right? I mean, they're trying to sell room nights. And I suspect in Cape Cod, it's probably not that hard for them to sell room nights in June, July, and August. But in some of the shoulder seasons, they might need something that can help them sell room nights, and maybe golf packages in April and May, or September and October, you know, could really be a strong draw for them. And certainly, yes, that's part of our recommendation that, and we were going to get to that here in a few minutes, that that is definitely on our list of business plan items that you could do more of to try to stimulate that activity.
Yeah, and just one other point, reorganizing the T-shirt so you have more public times available, that's half of the equation. The other half of the equation is making sure that the public knows about it and that there are marketing efforts being put forth to get those bodies coming to the golf course to use those available tee times. Doesn't do any good to have them available if nobody knows.
I'm not a golfer, but I always find it interesting when you talk to the golfers and we're trying to raise the annual fee to be able to cover our deficit, but yet they continuously complain that they have less and less availability for tee times. So I think when you start to squeeze them out of prime times and stuff like that, then you, yes, you're getting more of the money for the daily greens fees, but on the other side, people are choosing to golf in other places that are from our community. I wonder if you've ever seen a model where people who have 36 holes or the links, the links is a whole nother question I'd like to ask. One of the things I did like about your recommendation is, you know, the P&Ls by course, I think, is very, very important, at least for me, to be able to look at numbers and be able to tell where we're profitable, where we're not. It sounds to me, from what I've heard so far, that possibly Bayberry we are, but Bass River we potentially may not be. We don't have any data to know where the money's coming from, so it's difficult. But have you seen in a course, in a municipal courses that have multiple courses at different locations where you'd have a members-only and one that's open to the public? Have you ever seen that scenario?
No, on two separate properties.
On two separate properties, yeah.
No. At the same property, yes. You know, for example, you know, conceivably if they're both together, you could definitely consider doing, we're designating Course A as members-only, and this course could be members or public is available. But if you're at two separate non-contiguous properties, I don't believe it would be supportable or make sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because how would you convey that to your members in terms of what course are we playing today?
Right.
Well, I mean, just it would be a static property. This is our members-only, this is our, I don't know if that would make financial sense, or if you've seen it work in other places.
I haven't, but I think that the member daily fee balance is workable. I think that with, I think it's something that you can manage appropriately and manage expectations of your membership, and that make times available for them. With the level of rounds that are being played there now, there is a lot of capacity in the system. So it's not that members or others can't find tee times, it's that they can't find prime tee times, the ones that they really want. And that is always a challenge, and every golf course has to deal with that challenge. There are just certain times when it's harder to play. One of the things that I like to say about the golf business is that, you know.
24 hours a day is hard for me to play.
Yeah, right, a 24 hours a day is hard.
Hit the ball, doesn't matter what time of day it is.
Exactly. But it is your inventory, and you do have to manage your inventory. And, you know, not all rounds of golf are created equal. Some are more valuable than others, and you have to respect that, too. So it's certainly something that we have tried to give you a good recommendation on in terms of balancing that mix and to keep it alive. But the underlying on all of that is, is, you know, you've got, this has got to work. You've got to make, you've got to make this enough revenue to cover all your expenses. And that may require some change in the way that you manage the T-shirt in order to meet that goal.
Or even conversely, if you were to say, gosh, let's not go after the daily fee golfer. Let's think about if we were to go to a purely member-based level. At present, given what the membership rate is, and the fact that the members frankly don't take carts very often, they spend very little on food and beverage, you would need, we guesstimated today, north of 3,000 golf members in order to survive in that environment, to keep the current two courses open. Right now, you've got about 900. So basically, unattainable.
About 1,000. So you'd need about three times as many.
Yeah. And that pool, the pool of potential golfers here is not deep enough to get anywhere near that. I'm simply providing that as an example, not as a viable alternative. So.
Well, let's get into some of the business plan recommendations that we had come up with. Let me, we'll start by just a kind of a quick review of the financials, and I'll go right to this chart. I mean, this is essentially where you are now. And I think the main issue that we see here is that, you know, that in the last couple of years, a subsidy has been required, you know, to continue the operations of these facilities. You do have a high average annual revenue per round that has been increasing the last couple of years, but you've required a subsidy from taxpayers to maintain the operations and continue to provide golf to your, to your community. The expenses, the revenues are high for these golf courses, as we noted in our report, but the expenses are also high. And you've got issues in Massachusetts of prevailing wage and unions and labor challenges and a benefits package of 44% for your employees. I mean, all of these things combined to really help push the expense level up. And the other thing we noticed is that the inflation level annually in your expenses is rising very rapidly, too. So it really, I mean, the subsidies are something that we see continuing for the near future. But also, the history on this, a lot of this red, I mean, there's some, there's some history to that that should be noted.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, for example, in 2016, there was a severe drought here. The golf courses were burned out and damaged, so therefore, play had declined. 2017, nine holes at Bayberry Hills was under renovation. 2018, the other nine at Bayberry Hills was under renovation. Finally, in 2019, all holes were open at Bayberry and moved northward. It was showing great performance, and frankly, I think it's going to have a very good year in the coming fiscal year, or the new one that we're in now.
Assuming the weather cooperates with you. I mean, things you can't control. So yes, I mean, certainly the things were trending toward improvement in 2019, and that's a big plus for that. Our recommendations are pretty detailed, as it sounds like you've already spent some time looking at it. We'll just go over some of the highlights of this. I think I'll start by talking about some staffing issues that we had recommended. I mean, I think ultimately, you need a single authority for the entire golf system and for the golf courses, that they really should be under a single director of golf. And the public golf courses in this situation that operate the best, you know, have minimal town interference at the operations level. I think that the town of Yarmouth really should be involved at the broader strategic level in setting programs and policies for the year, setting fees, but not really being involved in the day-to-day issues of pace of play and tee times and things like that. I think that that really is when it, when it works best.
Or it's kind of like the basic model of mission, vision, structure, strategy, okay, fine. And then beyond that are going to be tactics and people. So that's, you know, really how you delineate that. So as long as upper management, so to speak, the town, the selectmen, and frankly, town management allows the golf staff to do their jobs, let them, give them the tools, give them the right marching orders, and let them go ye forth and execute the plan.
Right. And the kind of background we envision for an individual to run all of this, experience in management, accounting, technology, marketing of golf facilities, or hospitality in general. Barry, you want to talk about the food and beverage operations?
With regard to food and beverage, obviously, this has been kind of a hot-button topic for the town. In looking at what happens, virtually every other municipality here on Cape Cod, they all lease out their food and beverage operation. I think everybody has come to the conclusion that they, one, are not gifted food and beverage operators at the municipal level, probably shouldn't be in the food and beverage business, and the experience is going to be heightened by bringing in professionals to operate the food and beverage operation. Again, it's, for them, the opportunity is not just golfers. The opportunity is going to be golf plus outings, events, things like that. I heard stories at one of the properties in Sandwich Hollows, that they're generating $300,000 off of the golf, they're doing another $300,000 off of outings. That's a lot of money they're generating. You know, total F&amp;B revenue for both your courses, previous fiscal year was $471,000. In this place, one single location, is doing 600K. So if you were to do a contract whereby you're paid, call it 10% of gross revenue, one, it's money that you're going to get, I'll call it low-hanging fruit, that is going to be a lot easier to generate than the current structure whereby you're generating 40, $50,000 at a huge level of risk and involvement from staff. And, you know, again, you're not doing much beyond the golf operation. And I look at a facility like a Bass River with that outstanding location outdoors, I think that people would really line up to say, we want to take over this operation, you know, assuming they can come to agreement with the town, but it's such a special location, somebody's going to want it. And you should be very, very careful in your vetting process and insist on very strong credentials for whoever you select and capital.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When we usually get figures from the golf in the past, everything's lumped together and there's no breakout in terms of what these restaurants or concessions, however you want to describe them, are making. Did you get numbers on that and to see how that would compare to the town leasing it for 10%, let's say, of any projected revenue? I mean, how do we know we're better off doing that?
We got partial numbers. I think it generally suggested that at best, you're breaking even on food and beverage when you consider the revenues, less the cost of sales, less the direct expenses associated with it. But then it got quirky because there's various allocations. What type, what amount of space do you allocate for the utilities expense in the clubhouse that might be food and beverage or not food and beverage? But I think the general consensus among the town and your, and your town controller was that in the best case, it's breaking even and most likely losing some money for the town on food and beverage operations.
On the pure numbers, and I, because I actually, I did from the fiscal year 2019, which was just completed a few months ago, I actually took and created my own standalone piece just on F&amp;B. You know, it shows that you generated last year, or the previous fiscal year, $59,700 of positive NOI. However, I think that there are certain allocations that are not included. I think to say you generated almost 60 grand in NOI is a stretch. I'm not comfortable saying that that is a valid number.
But if you could get 50 or 60,000 from a lease operator and remove the risk entirely from it, I think that that makes it a much cleaner operation for you, and an opportunity for somebody with appropriate expertise to really take it to the next level and compete with these other town-owned golf courses on Cape Cod that are really doing much better than you in this area. I think in golf, it seems like you're lagging behind in rounds, but your higher average revenue per round, so you're somewhat comparable, but you're really lagging behind on the, on the food and beverage side, and there may be opportunity to really, to really grow it.
What you say makes sense, and I always thought it was a little strange with the town getting into that, to be honest with you, because historically, they did lease out those operations. And then there was a period of time where the town got involved. But the only reason I was, I was asking the question is, we never really got any breakdown on that or any, I didn't think cogent explanation as to how the food and beverage part of the operation was doing. Was it costing us money? Were we breaking even? But, you know, in furtherance of your answer, I noticed in your report, too, you brought out the fact that you could devote your personnel to the business of golf and not have them
Right, correct.
sidetracked into the food and beverage operation.
I think that that really helps. And I think that overall, I mean, it ties back to, you know, Council Selectmen Post's comment about the transparency of these different operations, and it's all kind of lumped together as just one Yarmouth Golf. And that among the recommendations from us is that you separate this out a little bit better. Let's look at Bayberry Hills separate from Bass River, and let's look at the food and beverage operations separate from the golf operations. Let's look at the merchandise operations separate from golf and food and beverage and the driving range operations, and really try to separate that out better. I think for you as decision-makers, it'll give you a better picture of what the entire golf operation really looks like.
And one other point on the F&amp;B, if I could, having a good food and beverage operator in there, what happens is it allows the food and beverage piece to team up with the golf piece to go and truly compete on an even playing field for additional events. Because if you've got a strong food and beverage package, you've got good golf courses, to be able to attract events, as long as everybody is rowing in the same direction on the golf Yarmouth team, so to speak, there's no reason that you can't start recruiting and generating more rounds from events and outings here on Cape Cod.
I just, you know, in terms of what Sandwich does, I don't think their facility's exactly the same. You know, we've, we've had a history here. We've been burned by a vendor in the past, so I think that that led us to the direction that we're in. I've always been hesitant about being in the alcohol business because as the license holder and the, the people who make decisions on whether or not you violate that license, I find that to be in contradiction. So I've always been hesitant about that, and I think we, if we did it, we need to be very, very careful, not like you said about the background, but I do, I do think a better food experience would benefit golf. It goes both ways, but we've also had a problem with, in terms of control, and one of the information, one of the pieces that, when they first came about the town doing it, was being able to control it. Because when we had a vendor in there, the people on the other side of the river listening to the music, things like that, they were complaining about. So at least if we operated it, we had control over it. So that was one of the reasons for it. So, but, but to the point about net-net, whether it's 60 or 70, I think in the long run, when you talk about a 44% benefits package, when you talk about OPEB, I think it's in the long run that there's, there's a cost savings to the town.
And again, on the food and beverage piece, you know, we're familiar with the history of the problems that were previously experienced with the other F&amp;B operator. Key things are going to be, one, adequate capital, they've got to have enough money to come in, make the capital improvements, and be a true partner. Good vetting process, a strong contract that has been written, and frankly, open lines of communication. There has to be a great relationship between the town and actually at the golf level with the onsite operator. I mean, they need to be meeting every morning. That's where we see success, and when they lease it out, that they're having meetings on a daily basis almost to talk about, okay, what's coming up? What are you doing? What do we have going on? Because they each need to know what each other is doing and ultimately, again, working in the same direction.
Yeah, we didn't have that, and I think that that was one of the problems because, you know, we're trying to keep the people happy around, and, you know, in their view, we're impacting their business because they have a bottom line that they want to make then. So when we're asking them to turn the music down or turn the music off, you know, we don't have to do that when we're the operator because it's in our control. So it, I think the contract has to be very strong.
If I may, I've spent a lot of time in that past history of what happened there, and there were a lot of situations there that I think were driven by somebody that wanted to maximize what they thought was their investment. I'm under no illusion that we would ever go back and enter into any agreement with a vendor that put undue pressure on them like that with undue expectations. To the communication piece, that's critical. What I can say is we do, if golf is what we want to be in that business and make that a best thing it can be, F&amp;B right now presently, since I've arrived in town, takes an unbelievable amount of energy away from that golf operation. We spend more time on the F&amp;B aspect of it, making sure those restaurants are open and got something going on with staff issues than we should be in the idea or the opportunity to let the golf operation focus on golf out on the field versus F&amp;B, to me personally, is a great opportunity potential. Because I do, in talking to Richard and Barry over this and our own golf management, the synergy is attractive to us, the idea that the best golf experience for what we have to offer, as you've heard here tonight, with an excellent F&amp;B operator would just maximize the experience of what Yarmouth Golf could be. So I, we would definitely work to ensure that whatever was put in force, the board for a future contract, lessons learned from that event from years ago, and would be structured such that we would not have a duplicate of that question.
One thing to consider is that, you know, the town of Yarmouth's economic interest in this, you're primarily in the business of selling green fees and cart fees. That's really where your economic interest is. And having a good food and beverage operation will help you sell more green fees and cart fees. will help you sell more green fees and cart fees. And I think that's the best way to look at it. You really shouldn't look at the F and B itself as a large profit center. It's essentially a service to golfers to help them come there and want to participate in golf and bring their event there and bring their tournament there and feel comfortable doing that so that you can sell green fees and cart fees and membership fees.
The other thing, too, is, again, getting back to the Bass River site, I think there's so much upside for non-golf visitors to come and enjoy the location. Again, you want to be a good neighbor within reason for the homes across the river. That, I believe that's the town of Dennis. I'm not saying just because you're in Dennis should torture them. However, they've got to have reasonable expectations. And I know there's an entertainment permit that does have specific times allotted for when music can be played. Enjoying that outdoor location doesn't necessarily have to have music. If they set up, you know, a nice little dining area with, you know, seated bar and what have you, you can do that. Music doesn't necessarily have to be a huge part of it. There's no reason that the absence of music would cause the demise of the use of that facility, in my opinion.
Good, good. Let's move on to, uh...
Yep.
I guess, you know, observations from, you know, other courses that I played at and the food and beverage operations. I know you talked about the cooperation. And I wonder about the cooperation among the resident members and the golf course with regard to food and beverage. Have you seen how that is structured? Or is there any kind of structure elsewhere between the members organizations and the leagues that exist and the food and beverage operations? Are there, I don't know that I could say requirements, but are there levels of participation in food and beverage by the residents that should be looked at?
Definitely. Not so much requirements, but certainly encouraging working together and creating certain minimums and discount programs for various leagues and resident groups and the membership groups. Some places, you'll find that, you know, a membership card will entitle you to a certain percent discount in the food and beverage area. And the independent third-party food and beverage operator will honor that in exchange for some other guarantees. That if you bring 65, 64 people for, you know, a men's golf association event, that you're going to spend a certain amount
Right.
per player, you know, for a food and beverage piece that's included in that, whether it's, you know, $6, $8, $10 a player, whatever it might be. And that's arranged ahead of time. They come in afterwards. There's either a buffet setup ready for them or, you know, ordering off the menu, whatever it might be. But yes, I do see that kind of cooperation. And that's really when it works best.
But also, there has to be, you can't expect the food and beverage vendor, or even if you did it yourself, to say, I'm going to take a haircut because the members need it.
Right.
That's just not, you know, that's not a pathway to success on either level, for the vendor or for the continued success of that vendor staying in place. You know, he's there simply to make money, as, you know, the golf course is. So again, the expectations need to be established and what's reasonable.
Okay.
Now, with, with regard to the golf playing fees, the past fees, we know for 2020 have already been approved, which we're on board with that. That makes perfect sense to put it to the, at 1150. And we do recommend that keeping in line with the 5% escalator that's allowed every other year. So just did it in 2020. The next 5% increase on membership fees should be 2022, and the next following one, 2024. With regard to the greens fees, and again, I'm talking about cart and green fee together. Bayberry Hills, last year, the peak season rate was 105. There is a psychological barrier, we believe, in golf. And nobody else in the public realm around here is over $100. So we see it necessary to throttle back that price to $95, $98, just to be below that barrier that puts you directly in line with others, with other golf courses, because there's several, 96 and 98. And again, Bass River, as I mentioned, this past year was a $95 cart and green fee. It's not. That's not where it needs to be. I think you'll generate a lot more traffic and harbor a lot more goodwill if it was something closer to, what is it, 83? I think 83 or 84 dollars for that combined price. Again, the golf courses are extremely different between Bass River and Bayberry. The differential in the quality also needs to be reflected in the differential in a price.
Do we really, I mean, I know we set that fee, but it's up to the discretion of whether or not they charge it. So do we, do we technically have, do we charge up to that?
No, you're not over the limit. No, no, you still have additional upside on the current pricing for cart and green. I think the most current number is 123 or 124 total for Bayberry.
Okay. So you're saying what they're actually charging from there should be different for Bass River?
Yes, ma'am.
Lower than the standard, but they're charging the same for both?
I think the key, well, a key recommendation on that is a differential. There's a differential playing experience between Bass River and Bayberry Hills. We believe there should be a differential fee. A one-size-fits-all is not really going to work for this system. And I think that that will help you. What's next? The cart policy?
Yeah, with regard to the carts, we looked quite a bit at this. We know that this is, you know, an important topic. Virtually everyone here does provide some amount of discount to the course members. The discount that we saw, though, here for Yarmouth was the highest among anybody on the Cape, among the competitive set we examined. Your discount off of the rack rate, it's 36% for 18 holes and 39% for nine-hole rounds. And that's, frankly, too generous. We think that the member rates need to be bumped a little bit to get it more in line with a 22% to 24% discount. That is more along the lines of the average we saw. You know, courses like Sandwich offer no discount. Of course, they're not exactly a rousing success story either. So, but with that said, you know, we recommend increasing the fees for the 18-hole carts by $3 and for nine-hole carts by $2. And oh, as far as the mandatory cart, there is, at present, mandatory carts at Bayberry until 1:00 PM. We think that that also is limiting play because nobody else utilizes that particular policy. We suggest only making carts mandatory, weekends and holidays, and only until 1:00 PM at Bayberry only.
Your balance between member and daily fee play, we discussed a little bit earlier, I think is certainly a key. And it's a key part of the business plan recommendations from the NGF in making inventory available to sell to the tourists that come on to Cape Cod, which is a key part of your future. I think that good management and tying into the next recommendation as well, a good POS system with T-sheet management can really help you with that. You should be able to mix it in. When you're playing 60,000 rounds on two golf courses plus an extra nine holes, there is capacity in this system. There is slack in the system. And there is available, there is tee times available to be able to mix this up. Moving certain tournaments to the afternoons that might be playing in the morning, freeing up maybe every other tee time, that kind of thing, to make available for out-of-town players is certainly a big part of that and I think would go well. The other thing with the new POS system is that the modern point-of-sale systems, you know, really can help you effectively manage and accumulate data. I mean, that seems to be the big, the big trend now in all of businesses, is data mining. And we all have our phones and we all, you know, get a lot of junk email and we all see. But it's somebody is basically studying that and targeting us for that. And, you know, golfers, you know, I'm a golfer and I get a lot of junk email, but the ones that come from golf courses, I look at because I consume that. And if they're sending me a special, they're sending me something that, hey, if I come back, a bounce-back bonus or whatever, I'm certainly going to take advantage of that. And everyone who pays a green fee to one of these Yarmouth Golf courses, you should be capturing that information, capturing some type of personal information, an email address from them so that you can communicate with them. Even if they live in North Dakota, you know, if they're ever back on the Cape, they have it on their phone. They had a bounce-back bonus that they got. They got some kind of discount. It ties them to the property, brings them back. I think you'll really see some pluses from that. We've seen a lot of success around the country with that. It's a real key to modern marketing of golf courses.
Plus, some yield management, much like when you've got, say, some softness in the tee sheet on a Friday afternoon, you see that, say, on, you know, Wednesday morning. Send out a blast email, you know, we have, you know, 20 tee times available. For the next hour, we will provide a 30% discount to anybody who responds to this email, you know, just to be able to help fill the tee sheet. Because frankly, as Richard mentioned, you know, it's inventory. Every tee time is inventory. And once that inventory is come and gone, it's spoiled, you're never getting it back. So a reduced revenue round is better than a no-revenue round.
That's a different mentality than our previous director had always taken because one of his thoughts were, it was better to have less traffic for maintenance purposes than to have higher traffic at a lower rate.
Right. Well, I think that you have to balance that. There is some truth to that. But that's when you're up in the, you know, 80, 90,000 rounds on these two courses. But at 60,000 rounds, you're, it's probably not an issue for you. But yes, it could come to that. It could come to that.
And I'm not saying, you know, you're not giving it away by any stretch of the imagination. I'm not saying you're dealing and you're begging for people to come. You know, the discount needs to be modest. You can't make it too significant because of what you do then is simply perpetuate people to wait, to then get thrown a little bit of catnip to come on in for a discounted round.
Right. And you also have your enterprise fund challenges that we've been talking about all evening that have to be met as well. So you don't want to push it so low that, you know, you're not playing a lot of golf and the conditions are beautiful, but nobody's paying their green fees, and then where are you? So there has to be a balance for that. And that's part of the reason why golf is a tough business, is balancing that properly. Was there more on here? Oh, you wanted to talk about leagues?
Yeah, with regard to the leagues, right now, I believe that virtually every league that is played on any of the Yarmouth courses, all the traffic, for the most part, I believe, is being played at Bass River. There needs to be a little better distribution of play, putting some of it, one, onto Bayberry Hills, particularly the links is always a good option. But the other thing, too, is, a lot of it's in the morning, on the weekday, again, prime time. You've got to be able to free up some of those times. In a league, it's good. You want, you know, strong leagues. You want support from your members. But there is also a balancing act. That's why pushing some of that play elsewhere and delaying some of the times, pushing it to the afternoon, later morning, times like that, we think is a good strategic move.
Yeah. And doing things to actively promote and attract new players to the leagues. Leagues can sometimes be a little bit clicky and they're hard to, for new people to join. And, you know, good management can really help steer people to the appropriate leagues and the appropriate groups that I think will help grow them and really strengthen, and strengthen your revenue for both courses. And, you know, player development is something that I don't want to get on my stump, my stump box, but it's really key for the future of golf. Any entity, whether it's a municipality or a private enterprise, anyone who is owning and operating a golf facility must have player development as part of your overall operational program, or you're shooting yourself in the head. You have to find a way to develop new players, to bring new players into the game, to teach them golf. In some cases, put a club in their hand for the first time and let them, you know, go out and learn and become part of it, to enjoy it, become part of one of the leagues, become part of one of the groups. And really, having a good beginner program will help your bottom line. I think we've proven that. The PGA and the NGF both have really proven that over time. Every new golfer you create could be a couple of thousand dollars in revenue for you for a year.
Yeah. Plus, again, it's a hard game. So the camaraderie, the people you meet is as much a part of it as is, frankly, the playing of it. I mean, because on its sheer, on the sheer surface, if you said to somebody, I want you to start playing golf, you're going to spend a couple thousand bucks on clubs, you're going to pay 100 bucks a round, oh, and by the way, you're going to be really terrible for your first five years. Sign me up. Where do I play?
Right.
I mean, that's a hard, that's a hard sell. So there has to be more to it than simply, you're going to go out and we're going to, you know, match skills. Oh, but I don't have any skills. So...
We'll help you develop them. I think that's key.
Yep, that's the key.
We made some marketing recommendations, the report detailed some things.
Can I just interrupt? You focus in that area seems to be toward adults. And I guess, and I think that that kind of development is important. It's a tough one. I mean, you know, I make analogies to skiing because I'm a skier as well. And the adult training programs are different from the youth training programs. And in skiing, there are enormous programs and training programs, racing programs, and that are devoted to youth that also bring the adults in, get them involved. And that doesn't exist in golf. There's not a get the kids out to play, have instruction, get that kind of a program going because then they'll do it for a lifetime. There isn't that kind of a structure in golf, whereas there is in skiing. And the economic cost of skiing is very high, as it is in golf. So I'm not sure why that hasn't progressed in the sport of golf. But your comments seem focused on getting the adults trained and out there as well.
Well, it's actually a little bit of, a little bit of both. And actually, there are junior programs. I think that's why it's really important that you have a PGA golf professional at both of these facilities. The PGA Junior League is larger now than it has ever been before. And in fact, the National Golf Foundation counted some 2 million juniors under the age of 17 playing golf for the first time in 2019, which is the largest number we've ever counted. So junior golf is growing and thriving. And that's, was definitely mentioned, and I neglected to mention it in this presentation, but we did note it in our report, that it is something that should be part of what you're, of what you're doing. And summer camps, I know that are being run, and you have a winter, excuse me, a summer, a couple of summer camp programs during the course of the summer at the courses that I think should be continued. And yes, it is, it is definitely a part of it.
One other point, too, that I'm sure this is not news to you all, is that the demos here don't indicate a strong base of youth here. Just, it's the nature of the market that you're in. Looking forward at, you know, five, 10, and 15-year projections, unfortunately, that picture's not getting any rosier based upon what we're seeing in the demos. Now, that said, I look at a golf course, like there's a par three golf course over in Sandwich called Holly Ridge. It's owned by a husband and wife, Joe and Jennifer O'Connor, who bought it a year or two ago. And they have done a great job with junior golf. But there is also a stronger base of juniors that reside in Sandwich than there are in Yarmouth. So you've got to be able to appeal and target your youth where they reside. I don't believe you're going to be able to tap into the Sandwich market just due to sheer distance.
But yes, junior golf, for what juniors there are, you know, should be part of it. I agree with you with you. And there are programs out there that can help you.
You made another comment that I'm interested in is with regard to the PGA professional, is what kind of position would that person occupy within our existing framework?
That could be in a number of different places, but either as kind of the director of everything is one option, or as the golf professional at each, at each location, kind of as a second, second tier.
As one of the, one of the operational people that you've indicated should be at the course.
Or even, you could consider an independent contractor relationship with a pro whose goal is purely to teach, to grow golf. That's their job. You know, I've seen that in many, many facilities where they're purely operating on an IC basis.
Right. Independent contractors is definitely, is definitely common. And we'll get to the org chart in just a minute. I think I just wanted to go over a couple of marketing ideas first. And just really focus on that modern marketing in golf is almost all about technology nowadays. I think the days of the, you know, the fold-out brochure, while I think that still could be somewhat effective, I don't think it's like it was 20 years ago. People are kind of tethered to their technology and their phones. And it's really about website and email and social media. And really making sure you come up in search engines. When people are coming to Cape Cod and they think, well, maybe I'll play golf while I'm here. So they type on their computer, golf in Cape Cod on Google, and they hit enter. You know, the Yarmouth Golf courses have to pop up on the first page. And there's ways that you can make sure that that happens with, with modern technology. And you might even consider, you know, hiring some help with that, whether it's a full-time person or maybe outsourcing as a, as a kind of a, as a start to just, to provide that. And certainly, some direct actions are appropriate, too. Your director of golf or marketing director needs to be reaching out directly to hotels and visitor bureaus and groups and organizations that hold golf tournaments and things like that, you know, to really try to, like we talked about before, work with the lodging component and the tourist component here in Cape Cod to make sure that, that the Yarmouth Golf courses are front and center in all of that marketing.
Yeah. And with regard to the hotels that are here, at present, there's three hotels that seem to be generating a number of rounds that are quantifiable, you know, at the Yarmouth courses, Heritage House, Bayside Hotel, and then the Irish Village. Those sum up to about 400 total rooms. You know, when you look, though, you know, if you were to draw... 400 total rooms. You know, when you look, though, you know, if you were to draw a 10-mile ring around what's here, that's a drop in the bucket. That really is. I mean, I look at, and again, you know, Dan, we talked a little bit about the Davenport Companies. I know that they have their own one golf course. It is a par three golf course. Not everybody wants a pure diet of par three. I would think that if some sort of alliance could be struck, if they were open to the idea to be able to allow them to package a, you know, golf at the Yarmouth courses, in addition to, not in lieu of, playing the par three golf course that they own at Blue Rock, that's a benefit. Look, if you could convince his guests of the Davenport Companies to increase their average length of stay by .25 or .5 days, that's money right in their pocket. And that's, you know, where the benefit of golf can really help the hotel business, give people another reason to stay longer.
We had prepared and delivered, you know, kind of a revised organizational chart for your golf, ultimately, you know, providing full authority and direct authority for the Town of Yarmouth golf operations to a Town of Yarmouth Director of Golf, probably headquarter that person at Bayberry Hills, and then have a separate pro or manager at each location, which kind of answers your question, Selectman, about, you know, having a PGA pro and where they could fit in. And we also talk about the separate food and beverage contracts at each location. And ultimately, you know, where it reports to in the town, I think that's for you to determine. But, you know, to try to streamline the operation and provide a strong central manager for the entire system, rather than one manager at each location, each reporting directly to the town, one central manager that would have all of the direct reports, you know, from below. We're coming now to the final piece. The financial analysis that we did was to prepare projections of the future. And we kind of put together sort of an expected case for you as to what we think that you could do if you implemented these recommendations. And I think that in general, it really shows that there is some potential to grow, but with the inflation expense, the expense inflation that you're experiencing, I think the projections are showing that it's still going to be somewhat tight when you consider the rapid inflation. But I think you can improve revenue by altering the mix of play, moving more weight toward tourist and daily fee golfers. And, you know, ties back to our recommendations of the member daily fee balance, I think you will see growth in revenue, possibly reaching, you know, as high as $4 million or so within a couple of years, I think is a reasonable target. But if the expenses continue to grow the way they have, you may find that that's only leaving you about $100,000 in net income, you know, after all expenses. We did put a capital line item in there as well. And, you know, after a couple of years, we feel confident in saying that you could cover about $175,000 a year in capital and still make $100,000 profit on golf.
That's probably into the fourth year of our projections. But the other thing, too, under this expected case scenario and looking at it, the revenue growth we see is coming exclusively from incremental rounds from public play. Because again, we talk about, we anticipate that membership will continue to decline just due to the population aging out, not being replaced as quickly as they're leaving or dropping their membership. That's really the sole source of where the growth is going to come from.
And what the town also asked us to look at is a kind of a little bit of a what-if, right? I mean, what would happen if membership falls even faster than we've projected? What would happen if, you know, no new daily fee rounds emerge at Yarmouth golf courses? What would happen if, you know, the membership falls much faster or more significant than we had projected? You know, the net income could be, you know, some $1.2 million worse over a five-year period than we have projected.
Or it ends up being almost $500,000 on a per-year basis versus the expected case scenario in terms of just gross revenue generation.
Right.
That's a lot of money.
So it really, it really makes a huge difference. And this is kind of, I know it's a little bit small to squint and see, but if you put side by side the expected scenario and the worst-case scenario, you know, we're talking about 68,000 rounds versus 58,000 rounds. Here's what, here's what it looks like. If you, you're at 60 now, if you can grow it to 68,000, things look pretty good. But if it kind of stays the same or even falls below to 58,000, that really changes it a lot. And on the membership side, it's the same thing. I mean, you've got about 1,000 members now, and we're projecting that that's going to fall to about 800 members in five years. But what if, you know, we're off on that and it falls even worse? It falls to lower than 700 members? That's kind of what we're showing with the worst-case scenario and what you might see. And it's certainly a reasonable possibility for you. And it's a tough business, and that's the reality. But I think that if you follow the recommendations that we've made here, I think you're really putting your best foot forward on golf in Yarmouth, and you're really giving it the best opportunity to hit the numbers that we call an expected case for you, assuming the weather cooperates. The last slide before we'll summarize is just kind of a side-by-side comparison of all our projections. I think the one thing that probably jumps out at you is there's only one column here that shows it in the black. And that is the, what's the matter? Oh, yeah.
No, I was just pointing to the one column.
The one column that shows in the black, and that's the expected case in 2024, where there is enough profit to cover $175,000 capital reserve, and you still have $100,000 in net income. And that's, you know, from more tourist and daily fee rounds and incremental membership fee increases of 5% every other year, you know, and that's keeping you ahead of the expected inflation. But the actual, of where you were in 2019?
Is that a different slide than what we have in our package?
It may be slightly different. We had some last-minute adjustments on debt service, but it was, it shouldn't be that different.
Shouldn't be different.
I mean, it shouldn't be different from the...
The one that we have, if I'm looking at the right page, shows expected 2021 with $136,000 profit. But the debt service instead is where the difference is.
Yeah, that's, I think we were, I apologize if that didn't get to you in time. Within the last couple of days, after some review, your town controller had given us some updated debt service information, which I think shows that there is still some debt service there, and it really makes a difference. That debt service is putting you into the red as opposed to being in the black from where it was before. So yes, we'll have to make sure we iron that out properly in terms of what the actual numbers for debt service actually were. And I think we made some adjustment to it within the last few days.
Okay.
So where does that leave us? We've kind of gone through all of it in terms of the existing facility and the external market situation and the business plan recommendations that NGF has made. And I think that to really, if I could summarize it into six or seven points of what, you know, what does the town need to do right now to work, to make golf work, I think, you know, the first one you've done, you've implemented the proposed member pricing changes and commit to at least 5% increases every other year. We recommend, you know, that you do a plan to outsource the food and beverage concession. Work to manage your golf rounds inventory to allow for a more non-member guest play, especially in the peak summer season. I think that's a key for you. We're talking about modifying the mandatory cart policy and adjusting cart fees. Were key recommendations. We are recommending that, you know, the director of golf, full authority to manage the golf courses without operational interference from the town, but strategic oversight is different. You're going to have to come up with a plan to fund the needed capital improvements because, as you've seen, the revenues from golf are not likely to cover that. And focus on marketing and attracting daily fee visitor hotel tournament outing play, I think that's a key for all public golf everywhere I go. And one of the questions that was asked of us is, you know, where has this worked? Where else do we see it? Where's the success stories for this? And I think that successful municipal golf in tourist markets, there's a lot of examples of success. And what they all have in common is they have a high-quality product, a tournament-quality golf course, which you have here with Bayberry Hills. You know, you allow golf to function within its own business plan and stick with it, to run it like a business, and let the people who are professional and know how to run golf to run it like a business. They don't do too severe a discounting. They charge the highest rate the market will bear. There is access for higher-paying tourist golfers, even though there's a large resident base around some of these properties. They do multi-tiered and marketing and promotional strategy. And some of the examples are, you know, New York State operates that Bethpage State Park. It's a very profitable municipal golf facility. The city of San Diego operates Torrey Pines. It's a very interesting one there. It's a 36-hole facility. The north course is kind of reserved primarily for residents. The south course, whoops, is reserved primarily, I hope that's north and south, I don't know if I got that right. But the south course is reserved primarily for higher-paying tourists. And the San Diego resident can play Torrey Pines North for like $27. A tourist coming in from Florida is going to pay $225. So, I mean, that's tourist golf in a tourist market, 36 holes. They make it work.
It also helps that they do host a pro tournament, but...
It's famous.
Yeah.
We're famous.
And that's a big part of it. There's no question about it. But it's still, regardless, it's a muni. It's a municipal golf facility owned and operated by the city of San Diego. And they have an outsourced food and beverage operation, but the rest of it, they do it themselves.
Can you help us get a national tournament here?
You definitely, on your way to. We heard today that the USGA has expressed interest in qualifiers here. I mean, that's your on-your-way. And certainly, you know, Bayberry Hills can certainly raise its profile in the coming years on the kind of tournaments that you can host. And I think that will only raise your profile and raise demand and interest in wanting to play it.
I mean, plus, Bayberry Hills is the only course among the competitive set that's over 7,000 yards from the back tees. Now, your average golfer doesn't care about that. It's purely bragging rights. However, when you're trying to secure, you know, significant tournaments, USGA qualifiers and the like, they're looking at that. So in some cases, that is important.
The city of Miami Beach owns and operates the, well, actually owns the Miami Beach Golf Club. They operate it via a lease. They have a lease in place there with a private operator who covers all the expenses, but the city covers the capital, the large capital program. And North Palm Beach just made a fresh, large investment in the property in 2019, and the revenues are covering the debt service there. So, you know, these are some of the things that the successful ones have in common.
They also are doing a brand-new clubhouse. The clubhouse opens probably in the next month. I'm trying to remember. Did they do a bond for that?
I think they did a bond issue for that.
Yeah, they did, I think, a geo-bond for the clubhouse. It was not being pushed back onto the golf operation.
So let's look at the other side, though. There are failing golf courses in, municipal golf courses in tourist markets. And here are the things that we see that they have in common. One is aging infrastructure and they're deferring maintenance. So the conditions are not really that good, and it is not that strong appeal. They allow active resident users oversight to their own personal benefit in terms of running it the way they want it to be run and fees the way they want it to be run. There's limited or no access for tourist golfers who want to pay higher fees, inefficient operations, inadequate staff, you know, and a process for change that is just, they're slow to change when the market conditions change. And that's certainly what we see. And while it's easy to think that, oh, in Florida, they must really be profitable in golf because they could play year-round, I've worked a lot with the city of Sarasota. They've been my client. They're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars on their golf operation. They have a 45-hole facility. They have a golf advisory board that is essentially running the golf course. The golfers who play there on a regular basis are essentially making policy and running the golf course, and it's losing money. And they have significant deferred maintenance and infrastructure issues that are going to cost millions that they've been deferring for years. Pompano Beach, they've started losing money a little bit. They have a 36-hole facility, recently redesigned by Greg Norman Golf. And after the redesign, they cut the expenses to try to make ends meet. And, you know, you can't cut your way to success in golf. You cut expenses, all you do is make the product worse, and golfers don't want to play it. Phoenix, Arizona is a Sunbelt area. You play golf year-round there. They have the single most active 18-hole golf course in the country at Cave Creek, is run by the city of Phoenix. They play 100,000 rounds of golf a year on one single 18-hole course, and they lose money. So it can happen. These other things are in place. It can happen. San Francisco has a good municipal golf system, but a very, very high expense structure, very high level of benefits, you know, prevailing wage, high minimum wage and all of that. And as a result, they really, they don't make profit on golf. So you can see it from both sides, a little bit of how that works. So anyway, that's it. I know that we've been kind of answering your questions as we go along, but I'm sure you have more. And we're available to stay here as long as you need us to continue to answer your questions.
Do you have questions, Tracy?
I have a couple of questions. More specific about the links. One of the things I know I talked about before with the P&Ls, I have not been able to find out whether or not the links is a valuable asset to our community to keep in the golf business. And, you know, we've talked a little bit about how we're going to close the deficit and whether or not maybe reutilization of that parcel to generate revenue so we could do some capital or other things would be beneficial. I guess I'd be interested in your thoughts on that.
Well, I think there's two sides to it. I'll start out with a preface by saying our research indicated there's too much golf in Cape Cod. There are, you know, only 800 golfers per 18 holes. So a reduction in the number of holes seems intuitive that it would, you know, it would make sense where it's reasonable. However, in terms of the specific profitability or lack of profitability of the links course itself, I think that's very difficult to really evaluate for a number of reasons. One, we've talked already about, you know, some of the transparency and the way that it's all been accounted for. But it's also difficult to look at the links as a standalone because a lot of people play it in conjunction with another nine-hole course over at Bayberry. So they may, you know, they may play the red front nine and then play the blue links course as a back nine. So, you know, how do you really separate that out in terms of what rounds it's playing and whatnot? But certainly, there is, you know, slack in capacity with that. And if you have another potential use that's potentially profitable for the town, I think that would be a key for us in terms of our recommendation there, as to what else you would do with it. If it's just going to sit fallow, then I think that that's, you know, that's a different recommendation.
But just even in terms of that, well, I'm not sure we have a specific use for it at this point in time. I think it's hard for us to determine whether or not we should be looking for another use for it because we don't really know the financials behind it. But, you know, whether or not it's costing us more to maintain to keep it operational as opposed to the benefit, you know, the return on investment. And I have that same question about Bass River. You know, with the millions of dollars that we have for capital needs coming up in the future, is there a way to project, basically like what we've done with Bayberry, we made the investment and we're seeing that return. Can we project that investment, what that will look like to the courses in terms of what you think the revenue it might get from that?
I think it's almost, we probably have to look at it from this case of best case or expected case with renovation and continued operation as-is. You know, we could lay it side by side and create, you know, that type of analysis. Because again, if continued operation as-is, at some point, continual deterioration of the asset, the infrastructure's going to get poorer, the experience will continue to decline, and then you're going to be at some point in the death spiral.
I think in general, though, although we have not done the analysis, we were not asked to really do the analysis of that as to what that upgrade would look like. Our gut feel is that it would be improved economically for a number of reasons. One, it would be a better quality product, so it would have appeal, and it should add to the willingness to want to pay top dollar to play a historic riverside golf course like that. But secondly, some of the improvements that have been proposed would help in the efficiency of maintaining it. And I think that'll be a big plus for you.
I think we were told the same thing with the investment in Bayberry, but yet the expenses, I don't think we've been able to, you know, it's, I was going to ask you about saving, if you've analyzed our expenses and why they're growing, but at the same time, you made the comment, if we don't keep up with it, you know, it's biting off your nose, spite your face because you've got to invest in it to...
Well, a lot of your expenses are labor-oriented, and I think that's a big part of the reason why it's really difficult to get your arms around cutting it. Because when you, you know, between a unionization and a prevailing wage and a large benefits package, I mean, it really makes it tough to cut. If you, for example, if you were to eliminate the links course, I mean, where are you really going to save on expenses unless you let somebody go in your maintenance operation there, or two people who are kind of responsible for that, and reduce your, reduce your staff on that? I mean, that's, there's risk in that.
Or I've also seen municipal golf courses outsource the maintenance function, you know, again, to reduce your overall labor budget. again, to reduce your overall labor budget. You know, there are companies out there, you know, certainly in the southeast U.S., I see them more prevalent than, you know, taking on just the maintenance function. I've got to believe there's going to be companies around here. Is it a viable option that would make sense? I don't know. Because again, you would still find yourself in the position of having to deal with the current employees that would be ultimately displaced.
Or lose their benefits.
That was one of the other questions as far as your professional experience. Do you see the staffing, generally speaking, for our courses consistent with what you've seen nationally or even regionally?
In some cases, a little light. But with the elimination of the food and beverage operation, take the bulk of those bodies and re-employ them in areas where you have some issues, you haven't been able, I know on some of the maintenance crew spots, they've had some open jobs that they haven't been able to fill. And, you know, again, just the body count may not go down once you eliminate food and beverage.
But I think in terms of the number of bodies that you have employed in the golf operation, I do not think it's overstaffed. I do not think it's understaffed. I think it's probably pretty close in direct answer to your question.
Okay.
But in the dollar cost per body, I think you're definitely higher.
But don't you think that that's any municipal, higher than other municipal courses or yes?
Yes, higher than other municipal courses. I think that's a function of Massachusetts and Cape Cod. And I think you also have a, you know, kind of a labor challenge in this area. A lot of your...
Well, we have a housing challenge as well, so...
So, I mean, that probably ties into it. I imagine it's tough to live on Cape Cod and work at a, you know, job maintaining a golf course. I mean, that can be, that can be difficult.
And forgive my ignorance on this, but your structure here talks about pros at both courses. Do we now have pros at both courses?
Yes, that is our understanding. You do.
So, would they be involved in the development? Is that, would be your vision that the pros would be involved in the development programs?
Yes, player development programs, yes.
One of the things I don't see in your structure is a marketing person. Who would you envision being tasked with that?
Well, we've talked about one of two ways to handle that. Either having a specific marketing person that is an employee of the town or possibly outsourcing that function. Because there's various pieces of this that are germane. One is going to be, for example, with regard to the website. Once your website frankly is set up, you're doing maintenance beyond that, so that really doesn't need to be necessarily under the town auspices. So, outsource that. If you bring on, excuse me, a marketing person, maybe you tie them to some sort of a success package where you outsource it. By that, I mean, they're out there knocking doors, creating relationships with the hotels, and you have to have a quantifiable system to measure their performance, and they're spiffed on that.
The organizational chart that you're looking at in this assumes that your director of golf, the senior manager, is doing some direct face-to-face marketing and managing some outsourcing of various technology-oriented marketing.
Okay. Has this presentation been made to our golf enterprise committee at all? Have they been able to see the details of your report? Have you talked with them about it?
I honestly can't. I don't know that.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could, this, because this is a Board of Selectmen initiative here, you're the first to see this publicly unveiled at this point. The data that's provided in the report, the report itself was made available to the public a couple of days in advance of this. So, anybody that wanted to go to the link to see the report could. But the actual presentation by Barry and Richard is, this is the first time to anybody.
Where are we at with the procurement of the POS system?
So, we were obviously been in a lot of contact through this process, and we're ready to go out to the street for an RFP for procurement. We were just waiting for these final puzzle pieces and authorization from the board to execute.
And my other question is, I know we talked about, you talked about a 5% every other year. And I'm not sure how the golf community feels about it, but it would seem to me that a 2.5% every year would be more consistent and better for everybody than that large bump every other year. So, I'm wondering what your thought process was.
To smooth out the increases.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to smooth it out. I think that, I think we were trying to place limits on it in terms of a maximum to not be too aggressive with it. But if that's the way the town wanted to go, to stay within it...
I don't know, I mean, I'm just wondering if you had a different philosophy that works in other communities, but I think, you talked about emotional points.
Yeah, we tried not to, an increase every year is something we try not to do. Every other is a little less painful, so to speak. Now, on the converse side of this is expenses, they're going up 3%, 4% every year.
Well, that's why I'm thinking we got to, if we do the 2.5%, I think it's almost something that, you know, at least for the unforeseen...
Slows the differential.
Yeah, I could see that.
Between, you know, inflation and revenue growth.
Yeah. Okay. I support your recommendations. I think outsourcing F&amp;B is something that we should consider looking at again. And I'm not sure how the golf community feels about the tee-time thing. I'm sure that there'll be some conversation about that. But generally speaking, I think we've, over the past couple of years, made the case. I think that they were very supportive about the fee increase structure that we just put into place because they understand the significant issue that we're in. So, hopefully, you know, they'll be supportive of something like that that generates revenue. But I think at the same time, I think the members want to feel like they're part of something and they're important and they have some type of priority. So, that's going to be a balance.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the thorough analysis. I mean, the detailed report that you submitted really documents how you got to your conclusions. And I think you've demonstrated that you have an in-depth knowledge and experience, and your recommendations flow from the data in many, in many cases. And I think that does, I really appreciate the work that you've done.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things. In trying to attract more retail, are we in effect just stealing rounds from other courses or are we...
No, there's definitely some cannibalization.
Yeah, okay. All right. Some of that, but at the same time, I think from some of the comments you talked about earlier, there's some potential for...
Absolutely.
And I know I personally have thought, I lived in Vermont for 12 years, and I thought it'd be great to come down on the Cape and play golf in the shoulder seasons.
Golf packages could be potentially a new source of rounds that are created that are not currently here.
Right. It's a little bit of both, but I think it's fair to assume the majority would have to be, you know, from, taken from another, from another golf course.
Early on.
Right.
Right, okay. The expenses, I guess in thinking about your comments, and you don't go into depth in with regard to recommendations, you just made the comment that our expenses are on the high side. And you clarified that with regard to the number of people. You don't believe we're high or low, we're about right. So, it's really the, probably the benefits packages that drive the costs of the, our course in particular and municipal courses generally. I mean, one way to deal with that, as you mentioned, is to outsource some of the operations. We have an awful lot of landscaping companies in Cape Cod, and, you know, I would think that there's certainly that possibility. I wouldn't do that without talking with our union organizations and saying, look, here's the issue we've got. We're a high-cost operation, we need to modify that, we need some changes in order to improve our operating results and see what we can do in that regard. But ultimately, I don't know if there are any other approaches to that issue itself that you've seen that may, it may have been successful elsewhere.
I mean, it's very difficult. I mean, it's, I mentioned at the very opening of this that, you know, golf is a high-fixed cost business, and that's, that's one of the realities of it. And I think a big part of the reason, and your observation is accurate, that we really didn't dwell on or spend a lot of time because I really don't have a lot of answers for you on your situation, given, given what you've done. There's only a handful of things that you can do. I did mention, though, that the, you know, spending money to renovate Bass River, it should be made more efficient by doing that. But how does that translate into savings? I mean, if it's more efficient to maintain Bass River, then maybe you could let one of your maintenance people go, you know, from Bass River. But, I mean, beyond that, you know, maybe the irrigation profile could be a little bit reduced and it might cost you a little less, but it's a few dollars on the margins. You might not have to spread as much chemical or fertilizer or that kind of thing around. But again, that's not a major expense in this. You're really heavy on labor expense, and I think that's going to really drive a lot of your decisions.
But you can't cheat on the maintenance piece either.
Right.
Because that is the key product. You know, there's been studies done over the years, and it said people would much rather play a poorly-designed, well-maintained golf course than the converse. Those people would know good golf course, but bid them in the backside anyway, but that's besides the point.
Right. Well, yeah, my personal experience is, once you start playing around with things like the depth of the grasses and, you know, you get into all kinds of difficulty with people, you know. And it's easy to say, keep it in the fairway, but that, you know, if you get in the...
Widen the fairways.
The heavy turf at the edge that's really nasty, it's, yeah, that's no fun. The other question I have is a comment you made about some courses where the committee is running the golf course, a member committee is running the golf course and difficulties with that. Here we have a situation where we have an enterprise committee that is an advisor to our select board. They're not in a position to make decisions with regard to the day-to-day operation of the golf course. Is that a viable approach? Is it, I know it puts you in a difficult spot in some regards, but is that approach a beneficial approach to have an advisory committee of the membership?
Yeah, no, that doesn't really put us in a difficult position. I think that that's the appropriate advice, is that it is an advisory commission that alerts you when things are in their problems and there are things that are going on on the golf courses that need your attention that may have to be addressed. But I think in some places, and I don't, we haven't really experienced this closely enough in just the summer of 2019 to really know, but in other places I've worked, I have seen it where they go beyond that.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, and they're really micromanaging the managers. And I think that that's where, and Sarasota was definitely one I wanted to use as an example because it's true. They just, they really are. They're micromanaging the managers. And I know that the young lady that manages the golf course and her complaint when she gets enclosed doors and no one's around, she's like, you got to get these people off my back. Because all I deal with, I don't deal with city officials. I deal with advisory committee people daily, coming in here and telling me how to run the golf course. And then they complain to elected officials, elected officials complain to the city manager, city manager complains to me, and then I have to do it. And the next thing you know, they're losing $800,000 a year on golf. So, you know, it, I've seen that before. But advisory committee is appropriate, and I think that it really helps the situation to have that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks again. Well-done job.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Appreciate hearing your recommendations.
Thanks for having us.
With respect to my questions, I'm very much interested in yielding my time to the members of the Golf Enterprise Fund Committee that are here. I'd be very much interested in letting them have an opportunity to ask questions while you're here. I know you folks are not probably coming back, so this might be an appropriate time to cede some time for them. So, they might have questions. I'd be very much interested in hearing their comments.
How do you want to structure that?
They're right behind you, and...
LLO.
Yeah. They work incredibly hard on behalf of the town and...
I know, I might have a different presentation.
Right. Well, I think most of us have had the opportunity to read.
Do any of you have questions, or would you rather come back before the board separately after you have had a chance to absorb all this and read the reports?
I'd rather come back and...
I'd like to hear from you personally, just as Mark.
We haven't had a chance to digest it.
Right.
We did have the opportunity to see a preliminary copy a few days ago.
Okay.
But, and some of the data was different here, but...
All right.
Just a little. There was only, there was a few, just a few changes.
Or speak amongst ourselves about it and react to it. And I personally don't have any obvious questions.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand that you weren't prepared for this. So...
Gentlemen, is it true, I do have one question. Is it true that generally the courses are producing a reasonable amount of rounds and they're making a reasonable amount of money? It's just that our expenses are higher than they should be, but the courses are running fairly efficiently, except that our expenses are too...
Your rounds are a bit low relative to the other courses on the Cape.
And what is low?
Rounds.
The rounds, overall rounds, which influences direct revenue. Expenses are high.
But I think, I think in general, that statement is...
You know what I think we should do, so everybody gets a minute? Why don't you go to the microphone?
Sorry.
No, him, yeah. And then you can speak into, because I don't think anybody that's listening to this can understand anything. So, why don't you ask your question again?
All right. The question to the gentleman was, I got the idea that the revenue being produced by our courses was within a reasonable amount and fairly profitable. However, one of the problems is our expenses were overly high. Is that a fairly accurate statement? We seem to be making decent money for courses, but our expenses could be cut more?
No, I think that, your first part is correct, but the second part is not. I think that it's true that the revenue is basically okay but a little low, the rounds is basically okay but a little low, and the expenses are high. But the solution is not to cut expenses. The solution is to increase revenue, increase rounds and increase revenue to cover those expenses and cover the capital. That's the way I would answer that.
In other words, you have a revenue problem, not an expense problem.
All right, I'm sorry, I was, I guess I was mistaken there because at first I understand you to say that the revenue was acceptable, but the expenses were high.
Yes, well, that's a, there's upside. But there's, but that's also a reflection of the reality of where you live and golf in Massachusetts and Cape Cod in particular, where the expenses are high. So, yes, you are producing, you know, a good, a good level of revenue, but it's not enough to cover what you need to maintain and operate these golf courses.
Richard, if I, could I just, because I didn't ask you, excuse me, I didn't ask this to be part of this study, but I think because we're going down this road, the obvious large problem here is the labor factor.
Right.
Do you have, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but in an equivalent scenario in Muni that outsourced its labor component, F&amp;B aside, that goes out anyways, but the entire operation, how does the revenue that we're generating here look against a business model where that would be outsourced, potentially?
I don't really know the answer to that because there's so many unique aspects to this location. I'm not sure how the outsourced companies might work here and how that might play out. But it's not so much an issue of a labor outsource as it is, as it is of a broader functional outsource that we see. And there is a growing industry with these, like you mentioned, these maintenance companies that do golf courses, and they'll charge you a flat fee to maintain the golf course for you. And that will cover both labor as well as materials and in some cases, equipment. And it's a huge relief of capital and labor expense and supplies and materials expense. But you may find that it's Cape Cod that they'll be just as expensive. So, I, you know, I don't know.
And there's unusual nuances also with that, Dan, in that you can do the maintenance contract, you have to be very precise in what the measure of, what the metrics are in terms of how they perform, what the frequency is of applications of specific chemicals, pesticides, herbicides, et cetera. The other thing, too, is do not ever let them own the maintenance equipment because if they ever, if you have a falling out, they walk off the job, you have zero equipment, and you are completely upside down. I've seen it happen before, and it's not good.
And the other thing, too, to keep in mind is that ultimately at their core...
They are private for-profit businesses, so they have to build a profit level in for themselves as well. So, it's, you know, the phrase I like to use, and you've all heard it over the years in our lives, the grass is always greener on the other side of the fence. And we have just as many clients who have their maintenance outsourced that I sit across from a town manager who says, what if we took it back? You know, would we, would we be better off? I mean, ultimately, what you have to understand in all of this is you've got to grow revenue on these golf courses to make this work. You're just dancing around the margins when you start talking about expenses.
Okay, well, I believe you had a good plan for growing revenue over the next several years. The question I have for the selectmen and for the town administrator, I'm not that familiar with unions, but if we did outsource it, what would happen to our current union employees?[1779.11] union employees? Would we still be responsible for their salaries?
No.
Would we, would they be fired?
They, so normally in a restructuring, and this is all hypothetical, and it's not that there's no, there's no, there's been no generation of a document that indicates that we're going down this road. There's been no analysis on this. But in general, when an organization, municipal organization would go down that road, the entity that would take over would offer, because the folks that were here would know the most about how to run it, would offer an employment opportunity.
Oh.
But we would not, you know, they would not have the same health benefit, they would not have a retirement program.
So, they would cease to be employees of the town?
They would stop in our liability, unless they were over 10, if they were over 10 years, we have a liability associated with medical benefit for them, and a certain pension liability associated with that. But yes, you're correct, we would not have any year-over-year obligation to them anymore.
Okay. I think that's another problem we'd have to look at. Well, thank you very much. I agree with both of you. I want to thank you for the presentation. I think it was well thought out and well done. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other question?
No, it's just an observation. I think the message is clear that our focus needs to be on growing revenue. And, you know, if we have to look at other things later on down the road, if we grow revenue, then expenses in relation to revenue will look, look a whole hell of a lot nicer. So...
That's the one good side for golf, is when you, it's a high fixed cost business, but if you can grow revenue, the costs shouldn't go up with it. They're not variable. So, they really should remain fixed. And I think that'll, that'll, you know, show a good bottom line.
Okay. Mark, did you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
What I'd like to do is get the Golf Enterprise Committee in here relatively soon after you feel you've digested everything, and give us your feedback on this.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if they could have a meeting, because you can't talk about this as a group unless you have a posted meeting, have a meeting, generate some questions.
We have a meeting scheduled for Monday.
Perfect. If you generate the questions and get them to Scott, we'll get them to Richard and Barry for follow-up on that, and we'll get his answers. And then when we get that, we'll have you back in front of the board, and we can digest that.
And we can arrange some type of phone conference with you and your, and your board if you want us to do that. I mean, I think that's part of our contract with you.
Okay, that'd be great. I know you've been here quite a while. I don't have any additional questions. I think you've thoroughly gone over everything and been pretty clear in your recommendations. I want to thank you for the comprehensive study that you've done and the very detailed analysis. It gives us, I think, the information we need to make the decisions that are going to be critical going forward. And it sheds a lot of light on, you know, we've had so many different opinions as to whether golf's viable, what should you do with the links course, where is the real meat of the problem? Is it in expenses? Is it in revenue? What about fees? And what's reasonable? What can the market bear? What kind of increases should there be? All this stuff, give it rest and give us, you know, in concrete analytical form, all of that information. So, I'm very grateful to you for that. And I look forward to, as Dan said, maybe a little bit of follow-up after we hear from the Golf Enterprise Committee. So, thank you very much.
Very good. You're welcome. Thank you.
Good opportunity to work with the town.
Great.
I hope you're gonna stay and play some golf tomorrow?
Yeah, we wish. It's actually gonna be a little warmer tomorrow, so...
Yeah, I know.
Some really, not as hearty as today.
I'm ready, yeah. And I'm gonna have to read...
I'm gonna warm up.
Go on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good.
All right. I have before the board several recommendations with respect to appointments. First, I'd like to take up recommendation number one here to appoint Susan Britta as the Recreation Commission's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Her term would run through July 2022.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Thank you. The next item for the board is to take action on appointments, reappointments to the Board of Health. So I'm recommending that we reappoint Hillard Bosky and Charlie Hallway for three-year terms to the Board of Health. These terms will run through October 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Thank you. And the last item here is to, and I've been advised to read each of these names, so I'm going to do so. These are recommended appointments, agents of the local licensing authority, which is us, to serve until we're presented with a new list of recommendations by the chief of police and eventually appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So chief, and what I'd like to do is ask for a vote on the entire group. I'll just read all of the names to get them into the record. Chief Frank Fredrickson, deputy chief Stephen Exaros, lieutenant Kevin Lennon, lieutenant Mike Bryant, lieutenant Andrew O'Malley, Sergeant Gerard Britt, Sergeant Brian Carte, Sergeant George, can you help me pronounce?
Sukalas.
Sukalas. Sergeant Tom Hennessy, Sergeant Stephen Renzi, Sergeant Chris McEckern, Sergeant Neil Donahue, Detective Sergeant Khalil Bogdan, Sergeant Richard Victor, Sergeant Diana Wells, Detective Eric Nuss, Detective David Schweiss, Detective Mike Zantini, Detective Scott Lundgren, Detective Michael Wells, Officer Nicholas Ambrosini, Officer Connor Burnham, Officer John Lantana Jr., Officer Erica Wenberg, Officer Chris Moreno, Officer Justin Hare, Officer Nicholas Jimarco, Officer Ryan Murphy, Officer Eric Rondina, Officer Eric Journay, Officer Michael Chung, and Officer Jefferson Willis. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
We approve the minutes of April 23rd, July 16th, and October 29th.
Second.
And the executive session minutes of October 28th, are those for release or?
No, that's a hold until.
And to be held.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It carries unanimously. Upcoming agenda review is next.
So on the meeting Tuesday, I expect Deputy Chief Exaros will be in attendance for the presentation of a proclamation on his pending retirement in December. With Barnstable Waits and Measures team will be here to give you a presentation on the proposal, their municipal agreement proposal they have, but it's right now going back and forth with town council. I'm not sure if we'll have all the detail ironed out, but you'll at least be brought up to speed over the last 20 years, what they've done for the town, and then what the plan for the future is. They'll discuss that. It's pretty fascinating activity that they do. And just for the record, I do not want to have to get into the business of Waits and Measures after sitting with them and seeing what they do for us all these years, so.
But I still don't understand why their fees aren't increased to.
I'll let them answer that question for you.
Okay.
I've had that go around with them on that. And then the hearings, we've got the golf fee hearing coming back, beach sticker hearing, and Mike, I know you and I, we have to talk about the Grand Cafe situation a bit, right?
Yes.
And the committee handbook, there was some last-minute glitches before it came back to you that we're ironing out. I'm thinking that that's going to make it on December 10th. We have to iron out some language in there.
So that's off for the 19th?
Yeah, that's off for the 19th.
For December 10th?
Yeah, and then the 10 board goals and the work plans that go with it, they'll go down to the 10th as well.
Okay.
Trying to make sure we get out before 11 o'clock next week.
Do they have anything else they want to put on for the 19th, or something they want to have a placeholder on going forward? Mark, you wrote me an email on a couple of matters.
Yeah, there's one I'd be interested, and maybe Dan wants to address this in his report, but TV communications, I think we need to have that as an agenda item. We've had problems, obviously, in streaming, committee meetings, town meeting, this meeting, so obviously there's equipment personnel issues that have to be addressed and relatively quickly, so I'd like to at least put a placeholder there to talk about this as a board.
Could I offer on December 17th, because there'll be some information in the new proposed budget to you for that topic.
Okay, that would be terrific, so there you go. I'm all in favor of that. The other thing is I'm interested in having a discussion with the board on legal services and a timeframe, or steps to proceed in terms of soliciting for town council services. I know many towns go through a policy of every few years, they'll put RFQ out. I'm not familiar at all with what Yarmouth is doing or has done, but I think after having, you know, we review the town administrator's performance, I think to some degree we should review and go over town council, but also have at least in mind a timeframe, and I'm not recommending a timeframe, but I do think we should think about a timeframe for putting those out for review in either RFQs or proposals, so.
So we're on, just if I could, we're on a letter agreement with town council, so council was procured, I think, like the year before I came here in 2016. Presently, after last year, there was a request to increase the fee, so I generated a new agreement letter with them, an appropriate time to probably have this conversation would be early in the spring, such that if there was to be a change in that, it would coincide with the end of the fiscal year, new fiscal year type of situation. So we certainly could work, if you've got some particular information you want us to run down on that aspect, but if you're looking to do something about like solicitation, which like anything else, I think it's always good to go to market to see, you know, what's out there as a market value, it would be well timed for the end of this fiscal year if you wanted to.
So we should be talking about that in the spring? You're talking sometime in February, March?
Yeah, probably so. The other one is Labor Council. Remember, we have a different Labor Council as well as it relates, and you don't have as much interaction with Labor Council as we do.
Got it.
But that's certainly something Labor Council that we presently have has been in town for an awful long time.
So I know you have a, we have on our list of agenda items, we're going into March, so I'd like to recommend maybe that last week in February, or maybe sometime in that timeframe, the 4th or the 25th?
Probably the 11th of February would work out best.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, could we put that down, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. All right, anybody else have anything they want to add to the next meeting, or to kind of put on the list for future agenda items?
Could I have one just real quick? It's come to my attention that there's amongst our partnership with DHY, there's a few more hurdles that we need to get over, but it was brought to my attention by some folks that perhaps because this topic is so complicated, that some kind of engagement at a special town meeting just on the wastewater topic should go under consideration in advance of annual town meeting. And I think certainly the presentation tonight, there's a, we heard a very divergent view on this topic, but I think there's some concern that was expressed to me that if we try to roll it into annual, it might just get so complicated, because our new format's not going to be on a Saturday anymore.
Right.
It's going to probably roll into multiple nights.
Right.
In late April, that perhaps that topic is so important to the town's future that it might be, because whatever came from a March, say, on that topic, we could have it ironed out potentially before annual town meeting. But the stakes are obviously very high, and there's a lot of passion on it, and it's like one of those topics that's so big, it's like you've got to bring the whole family under the tent and work it out.
We don't say those words here, the tent, under the tent.
Well, a new tent.
There you go.
But there's also some other wrinkles maybe in the three-town that we've got to work.
So you're talking about a special in March?
Yeah, just on that topic.
You just want us to talk.
I want you to have a conversation about it, yeah.
We need to have a conversation about a ballot also for the school.
So on that point, I was communicated from the superintendent today, MSBA is asking what our plans are about going to ballot for the Matices project. So they're looking, you know, I think roughly we have about an 18-month period before the debt schedule gets so significant, we would run into trouble. So, you know, it's like two bites at the election apple, maybe, you know, one in the spring, one in the fall, but certainly we should think about that and come up with a date certain if we want to go this spring on that, so we can communicate to MSBA, because they're concerned that if we don't have an exclusion vote and it gets taken care of, that there would be real impact to our operating finances, because as that, there will be, yes, no question there will be, yes.
Right. No, I.
So you're going to put it on for the exclusion vote?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to.
Have to, at some point, yeah.
And what's the recommendation that we do it when?
Well, I mean, this is part of the conversation here, I mean.
As part of a special, or we do do it on an annual?
You don't need to have it at town meeting.
Literally, you authorize a vote to go to like the spring ballot.
Well, that's right, because we already had the election instead of town meeting.
That's correct. So looking ahead as to what could be on the spring ballot, one of the things that we know would be on there is potentially some financing activity for wastewater potentially, or some other legislative action we need.
Yeah.
So we'll put together some information in the next few weeks as it relates to what the ballot could look like, but that's certainly something that.
Is November an option for the debt exclusion vote?
Next year? Next November?
Yeah.
It is. Of course, that would be a presidential situation.
Well, you get them out, you get people out.
You would get people out, for sure. It is, the only thing is we would need to work with the debt schedule, because we're, you know, the project is stopped, right? So we haven't incurred a significant amount of debt beyond design. There's still a lot of engineering and design work, it has to be bid, and even in that first slug of money that goes out for construction, that's all on a bond anticipatory note, a short-term borrow, much like with Cape Tech. So the impact on our finances is very minimal over the next probably 18 months for sure, so.
So it's conceal.
I'd be nervous about waiting until November, because if it fails, we have.
Well, that would be a problem then for the next fiscal year.
A whole nother plan and a whole nother budget we're going to have to look at.
Well, again, I'm just putting that out there as an option.
But we should have a discussion on it.
The thing that I'm nervous about is having so much stuff on the ballot for May dealing with wastewater. Let's say we have to pull a trigger on a recommendation with respect to CPC, I think that's likely geared up for that timeframe, other wastewater articles, the DHY agreement, although that could be different. We need, I'm very concerned about too much.
Too much.
Absolutely.
On one ballot and at one town meeting, because I think that is a potential recipe for problems.
The other thing I think is kind of tricky about the debt exclusion vote is, don't forget that there was 57% of people out there.
Right.
That voted against the new school, and if they think they have some control over undoing what's happened, you know, they might show up and without really knowing exactly what they're doing, is vote against it. So we have to provide a lot of information saying, look, we're obligated on this, and you have to vote in favor of this, otherwise it's going to have a disastrous impact on the municipal budget, because I can see a lot of people are really not.
Focus.
When I talk to people around town, to me, it's remarkable how little some of them know about issues that have been just almost beaten to death at various meetings, and so I can see people showing up saying, I voted against that, I'm going to vote against it again, not realizing that the vote to go forward is a done deal.
Well, the shutdown on the debt exclusion would be devastating financially to the town, I think we all know that.
Of course it would, but do they know that? That's my point, and we've got to make sure that they do.
Yeah, so.
So we've got to give it enough time to get that information.
So on the agenda, what would you recommend? When do you want to put that?
I would probably, so that's interesting, because the warrant, we have to close the warrant, I think it's about January 28th, so if we're going to have articles available for that, because what I, it's been kind of problematic going into the last couple of town meetings, we had a lot of articles that we just ended up not acting on, so we probably want to have that, if not in December, perhaps a workshop meeting to work this stuff out, and then so that way we know what articles should go on the warrant, and we're fairly confident that they'll succeed and get through to the town meeting. We've had so many that we loaded on there, had to withdraw them, and I'd try to.
When you're talking about the December meeting, you're talking for a special.
Like a workshop meeting just with the board to discuss some of these items?
Focus on.
To focus on the ballot potential and the articles, potential articles, because this wastewater issue is really complicated.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. The other issue that I would add on the water topic is I've asked Jeff Colby to come in on the 17th to give you a water update. We have to make a decision as to the direction of the water department, as to, we're at the end of the contract cycle for the general manager, so Jeff would like to present to you what his recommendation is on management of the water department going forward, and also the water department potentially, if we wanted to make this a water wastewater enterprise activity, there's ballot activity that has to go on with that, so. But we need to make a decision about management of the water department, and Jeff would like to get that in front of you in December, like the 17th meeting.
All right. Anybody have any individual items? Tracy?
I don't really have anything prepared. I just, I was remiss at our last meeting to talk about the loss of a council member in our, in Barnstable. I think, you know, we collaborate a lot with them. I know Jim Crocker served on the, well, he didn't serve, but he attended many of the selectman council's breakfasts that I went to, and he was a great resource. He was a very, I could say, strong advocate for his position on different things, working, he worked to shape some of the legislation that was around the expanded rooms tax too, so I think we would be remiss to not offer our condolences to the board and our neighboring community on his loss.
I support that.
I support that too.
Do you want me to draft a letter for you?
Yeah, why don't you send something over, I'll take a look at it. Thank you for that. Anything else, Tracy?
No, this time.
Norm?
No, I don't have any comments. I apologize for being here late.
Oh, we're glad you made it.
Sleepless in Seattle.
That's what I heard, that's what I heard.
Slept on a bench last night.
Just to make it here.
In the Seattle airport.
Dedication.
Yeah, so we left at 8:00 Seattle time this morning, and.
That's great.
So it's 11:00 our time, right?
That's great.
Yeah.
I think, just a couple of items. One is, I'd like to thank David Aiken for stepping up at the last minute and pulling together an impromptu Veterans Day's remembrance and ceremony at the Packet's Landing. I know there was a little bit of confusion there, and that's too bad, but at the last minute, he stepped up and helped organize something that I think was appropriate and fitting and a fine tribute, so kudos to David. The other item is, I'm hoping that maybe Dan or staff can brief Norm on our discussion regarding this easement issue, this license with respect to the property, because I know, I think we all were hoping that you could be part of that conversation, but.
Yeah, I let them know that you were adamantly opposed to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was. But they're going to, they're still going back and forth with it, it's going to come back.
Okay.
Nothing got decided.
Well, I think for me, I'm more interested in knowing now what your objection and concern was based on what you've read and heard. I'd like to know a little bit more about that.
Well, I think, you know, at first I thought it would, that what was being proposed was the existing structure.
Right.
And to bring it before our board to recognize that there had been a problem, and that they were asking for a license to deal with that. But in fact, when you look at the materials, it was, it's an expansion of the existing.
It is, it is a little bit, but they.
The stakes that were in the photograph clearly show an expansion, and that just bothered the heck out of me that that should be coming before us, and essentially with a $1 lease, essentially selling the land, because it is a long-term lease, it essentially does that, particularly when it's only for a buck.
Yeah.
Two things, and hopefully you'll be able to review this, that segment of meeting, but they had an engineer testify, as did our conservation, what's her title, director?
Coordinator.
Coordinator.
Yeah.
They both said that if they had to do it exactly the way it was done before, without, you know, some reconfiguration, it would compromise environmental interests, and there was 300 and something square feet total that was at stake, and it wasn't a lease, it was a license, meaning the town could revoke it anytime they wanted. It's mere permission to do that, that's all it is. But I'm not trying to, you know, argue a point, I'm just trying to lay out some of the points that were discussed, and so.
I would suggest this.
So town council's going to get together with their attorney, try to adopt some of the concerns, or draft around some of the concerns that were voiced.
All I wanted to recommend was if you could have an opportunity to take a look at the meeting and ask questions of Dan. If you could do that, that'd be great.
Well, if it's not on video, then I guess I won't see.
Well, I think it's on, it'll be on the YouTube channel, right? It'll be on the YouTube channel?
It'll be YouTube channel tomorrow.
Don't forget, we're YouTube sensations.
I don't, for what it's worth, it's coming back to us.
It'll probably be up to 1:00 tonight, so I didn't.
No, because 1:00 tonight will be 4:00 for you, right?
So those are my items, Mr. Chairman.
Just, yeah. Only 10 o'clock.
Okay, okay.
All right.
That's right, I'm backwards. Okay, so anybody, the only thing I'll say is, I echo Tracy's sentiments on showing some, you know, acknowledgement of Jim Crocker's contributions and our regrets at his untimely Apparently, I mean, everybody raved about the guy. I've never seen such accolades about somebody in political life. The other thing I'd like to mention is, like Mark said, there was some real confusion about whether there was going to be a Veterans Day ceremony, and there was nothing in the paper, there was nothing for Yarmouth, and then Dan sent a text basically saying he checked with the people that put this on, and there wasn't going to be anything, and then the day of Memorial Day, there was a little thing in the paper saying it was going to be a ceremony, and David Aiken explained that as of 6:00 the prior morning, I guess it had come to his attention that there wasn't anything, so he did like an impromptu ceremony, and others contributed to, Jim Leighton and Bob Lawton and people like that. So it was nice that they had something for the veterans that was there, it wasn't, you know, they didn't have the opportunity to do it as they would like to have done it, but they did get them recognized, and they had a little ceremony, so I thought that was nice.
There is one other thing I wanted to bring up.
What?
When we were talking with our golf consultants, and a question was raised about the links course, they were not saying, no, don't turn that into a solar field. They were saying, you know, if you had a really good municipal use for that, then you really, cutting down on the number of holes of golf on the Cape might be the best interest of the town. So I think we need to coincidentally, not coincidentally, but at the same time, look at our options on the links course, you know, is there a possibility of converting that to a solar field, and if so, what would that?
So that's, we went down this road a couple of years ago, so we'd have to reverse the Article 97 process, right? So that takes legislative action in Boston, it starts with town meeting, you have to get it passed through town meeting here, then you've got to get it through the legislature. We're still trying to get the charter changed from two years ago, too, right? So there's that aspect, but there's also replication, and that's probably our biggest single properly problem, is we'd have to go out into the community and replicate that, because right now, the information that we've got from EEOA is that the solar panels don't necessarily, we're taking off of recreational use and putting solar panels, nobody's have access to it. But more troublesome is the analysis that we did three years ago on how much revenue we could make off of that was based on a tariff program that no longer exists. So what Liz Argo explained to us tonight was the new tariff program, SMART, is heavily or quickly being oversubscribed to, so we're dropping quickly. It would be like three years from now, by the time we could even entertain solar. The other problem is the magnitude of that plant would be so large, we'd have serious problems getting it through the ever-source.
I see.
You know, how do they take on multi-megawatt? You know, that would be in the neighborhood of 2 to 4 megawatts up there, and that's a little bit beyond what they want to take on.
Could we?
But there could be another use that we could look at, it's been, it's kind of limited because of the landfill cap, but it's certainly an exercise we could go on, but I think the best days for solar, they still have, they still retain a high value because it's a landfill use, but it's so, I would feel better if we had the Article 97 transfer in hand, and then we could go to market and say, right now, if we went out to bid for this, what could you generate for us? But today, to start Article 97, it's two years to get to the other side.
So it has to be recreational use, is what you're saying?
No, we have to make up, we have to replicate, whatever we take off.
Yep.
Like, say we take five acres off, we peel off that, you'd have to go out in the neighborhood, and maybe somewhere in the town, and double that, like 10 acres somewhere else potentially.
So could we put on an RFI?
Well, you could to do that.
Another good reason to try and get the Forest Road property back and put that into recreational use and.
The Forest Road property that the Housing Authority owns?
That's right.
I'm not sure how you go about doing that.
Well, trade them some rights to Matices when that is.
All right, so that does raise another issue, Norman, and I know it's getting late, but we will have to start thinking about a Matices reuse charge for a committee, and that's going to be quite an undertaking, yeah.
We've done, I mean, we had two different.
That's right.
Committees that worked on John Simpkins.
But this is a huge site, this is the largest single parcel in this region for redevelopment potential, with a huge building.
Right, right.
So that's going to be a big undertaking, but I have Pat Armstrong working on charge language, I should get that in front of you by December potentially, so, just to get the committee formulated, you know, the frameworks of it and authorize it, but that's going to be a huge undertaking, because there's a great potential there with that site. I'd rather work on that than the landfill conversion of solar, just as an FYI.
Well, I'm going to have, we have to do something.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have a consent agenda.
Oh, we have a consent, right.
Some donations, including a substantial donation from the Rotary Club, if you could have a motion to approve that.
I move the consent agenda.
Thanks.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Other than that, I don't have any other items for you, other than we have our first DHY meeting since the news that came out of Harwich, that'll be tomorrow, so we'll see where they are at as a community on that topic, so they've, they and their town administrator that was kind of leading the charge have parted ways, so.
Yeah, so we'll probably get their interim.
Yeah, so, not sure where they're going. We'll try to find out.
Okay.
So that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Word adjourned.